Good morning, this is the public hearing of September 12th, 2017. Chair Sharon Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin. Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunsheir. Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Here.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Voss.
Here.
Okay, Commissioner, first item on the agenda is an application for a certificate of appropriateness to Borough Manhattan, DACA number 1911404. This is 278 West 11th Street, located within the Greenwich Village Historic District. It's an Italianate-style house built in 1853 and later altered. The application is to replace windows, the entry door and ironwork, construct rooftop and rear yard additions, and excavate the rear yard.
Good morning Commissioners, Stephanie Crowe, Preservation Staff. This item is 278 West 11th Street, located on the south side of West 11th Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. The proposal before you today is to replace windows, the entry door and ironwork at the West 11th Street facade, to construct a new rooftop addition and modify and expand the existing rear yard addition, and excavate the rear yard for a below-grade addition. The current appearance and condition of the facade and rear yard addition are the result of alterations approved by the Commission in 2012. The architect, Todd Ernst, is here to present the proposal and answer any questions. Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Todd Ernst. Thank you for the introduction. I'm sorry. Thank you for the introduction. Thanks for making time to listen to our presentation and look at our presentation. I'll take you through the slides. And just to, I know this is a little bit unusual since the job, the building was just renovated recently, but our goal is to take it to the next level and actually, I think, bring it as far as sensibilities closer to its historical original status. This is our cover sheet, and you can see right here, this is the house. I think prior to the 1940s, it was converted to a multiple dwelling. The stoop was removed, the facade was painted. Originally, per Landmark's designation report, the house is an 1850s Italianate, it's a transitional Italianate Greek Revival house, located in the West Village on West 11th Street. Going to the next slide. This is our location map in the Historic District, West Village Historic District, our plot plan. This plot plan shows the roof plan, the rear addition that was approved in 2012, which is a two-story rear addition, and we're proposing a first-floor, or actually garden-level bay window that looks out into the rear yard. The dash line represents an area of excavation of the rear yard where we're going to do a subterranean storage space, and we'll get more into that in a minute. Here's our Sanborn map, which highlights very clearly our plot within the context of our block. Going down to this component of the slide is a figure ground drawing of the donut of the block, which shows a very variegated series of rear yard extensions, everything from tenement buildings to different era townhouses, which makes up the fabric, as we know of the West Village. And here's an aerial photo that was added to this slide as well, so you can kind of see the roof scape, which is an important part of our presentation, the roof scape of the village. Some more historic photos, the tax photo, a 78 historic photo that shows essentially the same condition. And here's the current photo of the renovation that was done in 2012, returning the stoop, which is a very nice gesture, enhancing the facade or returning it back to its original masonry configuration, additional railings, new windows, and restored cornice. This part of the slide shows our streetscape, and you can see again a variegated streetscape of massing, of different style and types of buildings. Moving to this slide, another huge component, or large component of our project is the rear facade. And our building is in the middle. This is the two-story extension that you see capped by this coping stone that was done previously, and the whole back was done with a recycled historic brick. One thing we propose to change on the back facade is all the fenestration. What's there now is very industrial-looking, and our goal is to make it a more sensitive form of fenestration, and actually a little more residential-looking. And the interesting thing about this photo, this slide, is the adjacent buildings are different, but you can see in the scale and treatment they're more sensitive, with different types of fenestration, bay windows, oculi, and some interesting projections with this balcony above. So again, this is a little heavy-handed, and for our design and what we want to do for our client is do something that's a little more sensitive. These are some photos of the current rear yard condition, and right in this area is where we propose to add the subterranean storage space, and we're going to redo the trellises around the perimeter and also re-clad the perimeter walls with a different style of masonry, because it's a little overbearing, all the brick, and that's just part of our design, not really an impact so much on the neighbors, but just the thread that kind of we're weaving through this project. Again, this is the donut showing the block plan, existing, proposed, visually not much of a change. This slide is very important to discuss two or three things. One is the windows. The current windows are a little bit clunky. They're, the upper windows are four-over-four, and the parlor windows are casements with a transom that's a little disproportionate. So our goal here is to go to a lighter, more sensitive, or kind of, I think, historically consistent on the approach with the upper windows being six-over-six double hungs with lighter mullions and cross rails, and on the parlor, six-over-nine, which is a configuration you typically see in a Greek Revival or transitional Italianate townhouse. The other thing is these windows are all manufactured by a company called Jeldwin, so all the profiles are a little bit clunky, and we're going to do custom windows by a firm, a local firm called Riley Windows, who specializes in historic windows. The other big part of this facade upgrade is the entry door system. Right now, there's a pair of very heavy Italianate doors with a transom that's pretty basic, and what we would like to do is a single door flanked by side lights with multiple lights and very light mullions, and then a transom with the house number and some divisions in that that relate to our side lights. So again, a little more detail and more sensitivity in that regard. The other component here is the railings, and we have some details on that later in the presentation. The current railings are nice, and it was a great approach to re-engage the streetscape with these railings, but we would like to change the railings, again, to lighter, more lyrical presentation that just kind of hangs together with our whole approach to the townhouse. So we have a detailed sheet on that, I'll show you later in the presentation. And lastly is the rooftop addition, which you can see in 2D here. In reality and perspective from the street, you won't see this, but this is the existing rooftop addition, which is a bulkhead clad in horizontal wood with a canopy also in wood and a stock skylight. And what we're proposing is to maintain our bulkhead but extend over to create a penthouse addition, technically a penthouse, but otherwise known as the fourth floor. This will be, instead of using a wood treatment, we're going to clad this in a different color brick, so it delineates the new addition from the existing. And also at this level, much like our rear yard bay window, we're going to do these windows, have them constructed out of metal, so the profiles are very light, and the metal's actually going to be an antique bronze. So it'll read differently, but I think consistently with the rest of the building. Rear facade, the kind of blocky, industrial, and this is a little lighter with the bronze metalwork. We've introduced some pilasters here to create more of a punch effect with the fenestration, the lighter, more lyrical railings consistent with the front on the balcony, and this is essentially the same design as the front facade facing the rear. And we're restoring the rear terrace up here, which is now housing quite a bit of mechanical These are our sections existing and proposed that show the profile of the building relative to our neighbors on the east and west. And you can see in the gray tone or hatch pattern the shape of the adjacent buildings. Both buildings flanking us have enlargements. The one to the east has a series of artist skylights that you'd see like in a West Village artist garret, and to the west is a substantial rooftop addition, which you can see in the street photos. In our proposed design, looking west, you can see our penthouse addition relative to our neighbor, and to the east, again, our penthouse addition relative to the neighbor. And the main, I think, visual impact here that you can see in these, it's subtle, but it's important, is the chimney extensions, which we'll get into also. This slide shows the existing rear elevation and section. This is more for comparative purposes relative to this slide, which is our proposed. Here's the subterranean extension that we're describing. Okay, sorry about dragging this on. I know you have a busy schedule. I just wanted to say here, we've brought our subterranean extension inboard from the property lines, so we can do piling and lagging and not interfere with the neighbors. So I'm going to fast forward to the visibility questions. These are our floor plans, essentially a similar floor plan to the existing. And here we go to the existing rooftop conditions of the current wood-clad addition. And going to visibility, this is existing facade. Here's our, I know this is a little intense, but this is our rooftop mock-up that we did, which staff came and took a look at with us. More shots of our mock-up, and this is the proposed with the mock-up, and basically none of the mock-up is visible from the public thoroughfare, correct Jamie? Just the chimneys. And you can see the chimneys, we clad the chimney extensions in red, so they were very visible to, for inspection. But by code, we have to extend the flues. Currently, they're not compliant. More sightline photos, here's the flues again, visible from the west side of West 11th. This is the existing condition in a 2D rendering, the proposed. Here you can see the flu extensions. These are metalworking details. This is the existing, they're like a cartouche design, and we're going to do something that's a little more flowing, a little more detail, all in cast iron. And this is a comparison of similar buildings that we're using for inspiration, correct? Okay. I forgot to use my project manager, Jamie G., I'm sorry. Here's our window sheets with the existing kind of postmodern-looking four-over-four and the more lighter scale six-over-six, and that's pretty much it.
Okay, all right. Are there any, are there any questions?
Yes.
Yes, Fred.
On the front of the building, the door that you plan to replace and the fence that you plan to replace are, neither one of those is an original?
Neither are original.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we have a few speakers. Sarah B. Natman.
Good morning Commissioners, Sarah B. Natman of the Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation. GBSHP feels that the proposed ironwork for the front facade is inappropriate for an 1850s townhouse and is not based on any historic precedent in the Greenwich Village Historic District. While the existing ironwork, which was part of the 2012 LPC application, was not a replica of the original, at least it followed the general shape of Italianate models. We therefore urge that either the existing ironwork be retained or a different design be considered, more in keeping with this house and similar ones within the Greenwich Village Historic District. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Christa Belga.
Christa Belga for the Society for the Architecture of the City. We note that the excavation of the enormous storage space under the garden here appears likely to kill the tree at the edge of the neighbor's lot. The Commission has a policy of requiring excavations to stop five feet short of the rear lot line, so that in theory, a tree could still grow there. It would be worth considering a comparable policy at the side of the lot, in cases where it would prevent the killing of mature trees that shade the garden core. I note that the body of the excavation is a little ways in, but I understand that was done in order to provide for bracing, so that won't help the tree very much. Its roots will be cut. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? All right, Community Board two recommends approval of the front window doorway replacement, approval of the ironwork replacement, provide the drawings of the proposed ironwork or present to the Commission for their consideration. They have been. Denial of the penthouse configuration unless photographs of a mock-up are shown to the Commission to illustrate that's not visible from public thoroughfare. Approval of the rear yard modification, the repeal of the excavation, provide that is carried out in a manner that is safe and according to code. Do we have any additional questions for the architect? Okay, we can close the hearing. Comments? Any comments? Yes, John?
I think while the previous work that was done was very good, I think that much of what's being done right now is even a step forward, as they said, I do agree with that. I'm curious if there's a way to deal with the height of the chimneys, which seem to be pretty extraordinarily high, and I don't know whether, I understand that there's a requirement, they have to be a certain height relative to the height of the addition, but perhaps there is some work that can be done with the height or location of that addition to therefore reduce the height of those chimneys.
Right, I think there's some, there are, I guess, a few options. One is looking at the floor-to-ceiling height itself within the penthouse. It's larger than what it is right now, and whether that, you know, I understand that they want space and it should be nice and light and airy, but we can ask them to work with staff on that, to reduce the height, and/or we've allowed, or sometimes people have explored the flues, they sometimes angle back, and so they are away from the front facade, and that also can minimize the effect. So I think, I would suggest that they work with staff to do that. Does that seem reasonable? Okay. Are there any other concerns? Yes, or comments?
Yeah, just whether or not we, this came up last week as well, can ask them to reduce the width of the excavation for this storage area in order to consider the testimony about the tree, or if that can be assessed, you know, the extent to which it damages or might damage the tree. I know it's not our area, but it's...
I just think that what I would say is that the amount of excavation they're proposing here is very much within what we've allowed elsewhere, and I think we haven't taken into consideration whether there's a tree next door that could theoretically be impacted. I think we've sort of, you know, this sets back from the sides as well, some of the excavation that we've allowed goes all the way to the extent.
The team has also indicated that they've had an arborist look at this, and so they feel that the way it's being excavated will save the tree.
So, so the arborist, okay. I mean, the question of where this tree actually is, on which lot, in terms of where its roots are, you know, relative to an excavation, is a question, it seems, because the roots may extend likely to this property, and so when we're talking about an excavation, whose is it?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's very complicated when we start doing these things. For example, nothing prevents the owner of that other lot to chop the tree down, and his or her, you know, decision. So I think it's not a great area for us to start weighing in on and trying to preserve trees. I think we don't have a lot of regulatory authority here. It's never been something that has been a reason for design, except in very few instances. Rear yard, full legion stuff has never been what we are designating and preserving, and the Commission has taken efforts to sort of try to preserve some area of deep planting, regardless of whether there's a tree there or not, but the potential. So I would just be wary of trying to sort of craft policy to preserve a particular tree.
Well, just one more question. I think you, I think you clarified last week, but I don't remember. Where did the five feet come from?
The five feet came from a discussion and some sort of evolved over time as a way to sort of ensure that there was the ability for these rear yards, in the event that there was these full lot, full width, or, you know, excavations, to preserve the ability for very large trees. On the theory that, you know, no matter how much you added topsoil to the top of these other trees, or in the event that maybe these things would fail and they would never really be taken out, you would still have the potential to have some, some significant plantings. So that was just, it was on that property, not, it wasn't about protecting other people's property.
Right, so you're saying it was about, it pertained to the, kind of to the collective, to the public donut, giving more room there rather than to adjacent properties, right? So you wouldn't want to apply that same, revisit those rules about the side yard, the side easement, side dimensions?
It's not a rule, it's a policy.
It's a policy, I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Fred?
In the matter of 278 West 11th Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District, this is an application to replace windows, the entry door and ironwork, construct rooftop and rear yard additions, and excavate the rear yard. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. Recommend approval, noting that the proposed multi-light, double-hung wood windows, panel wood door with side lights and transom, and ornamental ironwork will recall the features typically found on a transition, on transitional buildings of this type and period within the Historic District, and will be harmonious with the stylistic variations of the streetscape. That the construction of the proposed rooftop and rear yard additions will not damage any significant architectural features of the building. That the proposed rooftop additions will not be visible from a public thoroughfare and will be set back from the front and rear facades, thereby helping to maintain a sense of the building's original massing. That the proposed one-story extension at the base of the rear yard addition will not be visible from a public thoroughfare and will only slightly increase the footprint of the existing addition. That the design and materiality of the proposed rooftop and rear yard additions will be compatible with the architecture of the building and consistent with the treatment and addition of additions typically found on buildings of this, of this type. And that the excavation work at the rear yard will not extend to the rear lot line and will not significantly alter the relationship of this yard to the neighboring yards, and will be built in compliance with the Department of Buildings Regulations under the supervision of a licensed professional engineer to protect the building's facade and the adjacent buildings. I also note that the applicant will work with staff to investigate strategies to reduce the height of the rooftop addition, and further to reduce the visibility of the flu extensions.
Okay, second, all in favor? Any opposed? Application approved.
The second item on the agenda is an application for a certificate of appropriateness to Borough Manhattan, DACA number 1913637. This is 30 West 8th Street, located within the Greenwich Village Historic District. It's a row house built in 1838 and altered in 1885, and the application is to construct a ramp.
Good morning Commissioners, Anne Jennings, Preservation Staff. This application is for 30 West 8th Street. It's located at the southeast corner of West 8th and McDougall Streets in the Greenwich Village Historic District. The application is to construct a barrier-free access ramp leading to an entrance on McDougall Street and install associated signage, as well as installing a commemorative plaque at the McDougall Street facade. I just want to point out that the entrance that will be used for the, to access the ramp, as well as this areaway fence, was both approved by the Commission in the 70s and the 80s, so neither the doorway or the fence are historic. I also want to point out that as initially proposed and shown to the Community Board, the side light actually featured a multi-light configuration, and it was changed to this configuration in response to their comments. And the applicant is here to present the proposal.
Thank you, Anne. Good morning Commissioners, Pat Backleberg, Higgins Quaysworth &amp; Partners. Anne summarized the application for me. One thing I'll just point out on this site plan, you can see this dash line here represents the property line. The building here on the southeast corner of 8th Street and McDougall steps in, and then there's a railing that Anne mentioned that is out here, so, and then you can see we have existing photos, which we'll take you through. I should also introduce our client, Lori Buckholder, and at present for Green Architects. If there are any questions, they're available to answer them if I'm not able. Some historic photos, the 1940s tax photo on the left, and the photo of the building at the time of designation from the late 1960s. This is the storefront on 8th Avenue, and then you can see by the 1960s, there were poster boxes. This historic window had been filled, and this is the entry, it's actually behind this box, this is the entry that is currently in place that's going to be used for the accessible entry. This is the view looking south on McDougall, the existing railing and the door, similar shot looking north. This area is used for temporary seating during the day. And the proposal for the ramp is in response to a suit lawsuit against the tenants, Stumtown and Buckholder Warren, or the, or the managers of the building. This is the door, the existing double-leaf door, each leaf is one foot and eleven inches in width, so we need to adjust that to three feet, and then you can see some details of the railing. This is the corner entry at 8th Street and McDougall. As Anne pointed out, the ramp sits within that existing railing quite nicely. So some renderings of the ramp, the railing on the north side, all of So some renderings of the ramp, the railing on the north side, all of this will remain. This is the existing material that will remain, and this railing here will be new to accommodate the height adjustment for the new ramp. And this is the three-foot door with a side light here, and this will serve as the accessible entry. There are plaques here and here calling out where the accessible entry is, and the commemorative plaque here dedicated to Norman Buckbinder, who was the founder of the Village Alliance, will be, will be installed just above that, that other ADA-related plaque. Existing plan on the left and a proposed plan on the right, so you can see the outline of the existing railing right now and the, and the stair. There's a hatch to the basement up there, so all the work really is happening in here. You can see the ramp will extend out to this point. There's a slight reconfiguration. This railing right now is extending off of this, this piece. We're going to tuck it in right behind here, so it doesn't quite take up as much room. And there'll be a step up and a step up here to the door and a ramp up that way around, around the railing. An existing elevation on the top and a proposed elevation on the bottom. Little modest change between the two. You can see the two plaques and the three-foot door here with the side light, and then the ramp tucked in within the footprint of the existing railing. The detailed elevations and a section through the railing. In addition, there's a handrail that's required by code, which will be anchored into the mortar joints on the, on the inward side of the building, and then some, some elevations just illustrating the, the ramp. Details of the railing, the painted metal railing, the new section will obviously match the existing section up north, and a simple handrail inward of the top rail. The existing doors, as I said, they're one foot eleven each leaf. The new doors will be three oh with a fixed eight-inch side light. There'll be an operator on the inward side. There's no, excuse me, there's no need for pedestal or push plate because of the, because of the clearances. And then some details on the signage, the commemorative plaque on the top, a bronze plaque anchored into the mortar joints, and then the accessible entry directional signage, which will be actually applied in pieces onto the... Go back to this and move that.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any speakers on this item? There are no speakers. Community Board Two recommends approval of the ramp and moving the fence, provide the applicant's approval from the agencies. Okay. I guess they mean us as well as DOT, if it has to go through DOT. And they recommend denial of the doorway infill unless the width is increased to fill in the opening or is centered with a wider frame. As you know, that to make it ADA accessible, they've had to actually have a single-sleeve door, and so it's code, it's a code requirement. Okay. If there are no other questions, we can close the hearing. Are there any concerns? It seems very straightforward. Straightforward and subtle and, and I think both the...
Necessary.
Necessary. And the signage, I think, is very modest, so, okay. Interrogable.
Okay. In the matter of docket 19-13637, 30 West 8th Street, Greenwich Village Historic District, a row house built in 1838 and altered in 1885. The application is to construct a ramp. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. I recommend approval finding. That the work will not remove or obscure any significant architectural features. That the proposed ramp will be small in size and well-integrated into an existing modern fenced-in area at the side of the building. That the proposed concrete paving, metal fencing, and simply designed railings will be harmonious with materials found at the sidewalk and building. That the signs and commemorative plaque will be small in size, simply designed, and well-scaled to their locations, thereby helping them to remain a discreet presence at the building. And that proposed work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building, streetscape, or the Greenwich Village Historic District.
All in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay. Commissioners, the third item on the agenda is an application for a certificate of appropriateness of the Borough of Manhattan, docket number 19-15614. This is 59 Bleeker Street, located within the NoHo Historic District. It's an Art Deco-style store and service station designed by F. H. Klee and built in 1929 and modified circa 1980. The application is to amend Status Update Letter 19-1031, which approved demolishing a portion of the building, constructing a new building, and installing storefront infill signage and rooftop mechanical equipment.
Good morning, Commissioners. Leanne Collins, Preservation Staff. Site number is 59 Bleeker Street, located on the northwest corner of Bleeker Street and Lafayette Street in the NoHo Historic District. The site originally featured three 19th-century houses that were converted for commercial use and then replaced with stores and a service station in 1929. A portion of the service station, which was that, that piece, was replaced with a full lot, one-story warehouse, and storefront infill was installed circa 1980. This amendment, amended proposal requests to enlarge rooftop mechanical equipment. Here you'll see what was originally approved and what is now proposed. And also to remove extent historic fabric to reduce the width of the terracotta pier at the Lafayette Street facade. So again, what was originally approved is now proposed. Architect Jack Byer is here to elaborate and to answer any questions. Thank you.
Good morning. We're back in almost exactly 14 months since we last saw you with this project. And during that timeframe, we have been working with the owners for the development of our construction documents, our pricing, and particularly with regard to leasing the retail. This is a building, as you may remember, is owned by the same owner as the Bayard Condit Building, the only Louis Sullivan building in the, in New York. And it represents a very small context of historic preservation. This shows you the first part of what we're going to be talking to you about today as a modification to what was approved when you last saw it. The first part is a, a change to the terracotta panel, which when we did more research and more discovery, we found that what we had shown you and was approved was actually not there in its entirety. In other words, the panel that we're showing here, which would, which is actually the, what was there when, when you, when, when we proposed the design, but we had the wrong information about the extent of it. So since it is not the original panel, we are proposing to reduce it further to a terracotta column pier to make it align with the actual end of the building, which is the historic piece, the only historic piece of the building ensemble. From here over is all new, which was approved. The terracotta parapet, which is essentially the singular element that qualifies it as a contributing building, will be completely restored, and it's in pretty good shape. So we're talking about a situation where the panel that we thought was there and was approved by you is actually significantly smaller by, the original panel was, when, when it was built originally, I'm going to show you the next slide, which explains this anomaly. There's a photo, 1940 typical tax photo, showing what was there. Then in the 80s, with a renovation by Edgar Taffel, actually, it was reduced to that amount, which is why we are proposing to reduce it further because it's not original. That's the key rationale for the change. If it were original, we would not have done this, but since it's not original, we're proposing another modification. Here is a Taffel drawing that shows the original, which was an existing condition drawing, at nine feet, which is what was here. What was built and actually surveyed was five foot six inches, and it was removed, three foot six was removed. So that is the story of our proposal to change the elevation on Lafayette Street only. The next piece of our revision is the mechanical enclosure, which often occurs because of things that evolve over the period of time of the development of the building. This is what we had submitted and had approved, a structure 10 feet wide, 10 feet deep, and six feet high. In working with the owner and tenants, we have determined that that is inadequate, and we're proposing 19 feet wide instead of 10. Nine feet, six inches deep, and I'll show you that, instead of 10 feet. And six feet, 11 inches high instead of six feet. This is the elevation on the others, on the Bleeker Street side, and you can see it's, it's actually slightly smaller. This is a section that shows the way it would be built. Now I'll show you views that you had approved and the new views from the same location with a mock-up. So looking at it from Crosby Street, you see the two views, and you see the size of the, of the different roof plan showing the mechanical equipment as proposed and approved, as submitted and approved by LPC in 2016 and is now currently being proposed. The yellow actually is somewhat enhanced, just to make it clearer, the view from what we have from Crosby Street, previously approved on the right, sorry, and currently proposed on the left. Minimal, in my judgment, minimal visibility. Change, minimal change. And then from Lafayette Street, which is, which has more visibility than the previous approved and the currently approved. Let me just go back to that. Then there, we decided with the staff to maybe take another view, a longer view. Let me go back to that plan. We didn't show these in the original proposal, but with staff, we decided it would be smart to just take a further view, because often the more distant view is the more revealing view. In this case, I think it's minimally more visible, as shown on the proposed on the right and the previous on the left.
Next, just a question. Yeah.
In terms of position, go back to the diagram for a second, through this page. Is there any reason why you couldn't move the units north so that they are equidistant from the west and north edges of the building?
The reason is the windows in the Bayard, Condit Bayard building, the office windows, the clients really didn't want to cancel it from there. And we felt that it was a relatively small change to the visibility. Okay. Just, if you're interested, and tell me if you're not, we did a more detailed, actual layout of the equipment, just to prove that what we're asking for is actually the equipment that will be built.
Okay.
So that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Are there any speakers on this item? Any speakers? Community Board Two recommends approval of this application. So if we have any questions, we can close the hearing. Are there any concerns? Okay, I think the changes are very modest, and I remember when this came to us about a year ago, I think we were just very happy to see that this building is going to have, yeah, exactly, fresh enough. Okay. John?
In the matter of docket number 19-15614, 59 Bleeker Street, in the NoHo Historic District, an Art Deco-style store and service station designed by F. H. Kyle and built in 1929, modified around 1980. Application is to amend Status Update Letter 19-1031, which approved demolishing a portion of the building, constructing a new building, and installing storefront infill signage and rooftop mechanical equipment. I note that the style, scale, materials, and details of portions of the building are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the NoHo Historic District. I also note that at the public hearing of July 26, 2016, the commission approved a smaller rooftop bulkhead for mechanical equipment and a wider terracotta pier at the storefront. I recommend approval, noting that the documentation reveals that the historic terracotta wall, which is presently concealed by metal cladding, is in a deteriorated condition that warrants its replacement or removal. That the width of the terracotta wall has been reduced as a result of previous storefront alterations. That widening the display window will unify the overall storefront infill design, and the new terracotta pier will align with the width and termination point of the historic terracotta parapet, which serves to delineate the historic portion of the building from the rebuilt nonhistoric warehouse. That the enlargement of the rooftop mechanical screen will only minimally increase its visibility from a public thoroughfare, and that the light gray finish of the rooftop mechanical screen will help it blend in with the undesigned secondary facades of adjacent buildings and will not detract from the historic terracotta parapet.
All in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Commissioners, the fourth item on the agenda is an application for a certificate of appropriateness of the Borough of Manhattan, docket number 19-15666. This is 18 West 74th Street, located within the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. It's a Georgian revival-style warehouse with Bozar-style elements, designed by Percy Griffin and built in 1904. The application is to enlarge window openings.
Good morning, Commissioners. Katrina Bishop, Preservation Staff. The application before you is 18 West 74th Street, located between Central Park West and Columbus Avenue in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. The proposal is to enlarge one window opening at the top floor of the rear facade of this row house, which is not visible from any public thoroughfare. The adjacent openings at this level were enlarged prior to designation and now feature double doors leading onto a roof terrace. The project before you today, because LPC rules do not allow alterations to windows at the top floor of a row house at staff level, the applicant, Selena Lee, is here to present.
Hi, my name is Kyle O'Donnell. I'm here with Selena Lee of LWPR Architecture. You'll notice that the scope's on the fifth floor, back here. It's not visible from the visibility study, turn on its side, from any public thoroughfare. And this is the window up here, looking from the rear alley. It's the existing window, this is the window below it, and this is the existing casement outswing window. So what you're looking at over here is the originally approved work at the staff level. This is what we're asking for. The original approved window was just a replacement of the existing casement window, and what we're looking for is a 31 inches of vertical extension of the opening, and then a railing to match the existing powder-coated metal rail. The window itself is a mahogany frame window, true divided, and painted black.
Okay. Okay. Are there any questions?
Why is this not a staff level?
Yes.
Because it's a top-floor window.
Right, that's what the rules require. If it's a top floor of a row house, the masonry opening can't be altered.
Okay. We have one speaker, Anna. We have one speaker, Anna Sifter.
Good morning, Commissioners. Anna Sifter for Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee carefully reviewed the applicant's proposal to enlarge a window opening on the fifth story of the rear facade, and we largely find the proposed modifications appropriate. In retaining the existing lintel and in matching the new window sill to that of the existing sill, the proposal minimizes some of the disruptive potential of the alteration. We would prefer the applicant consider the thickness of the styles and rails of the new window to more elegantly match with the French doors of the adjacent balcony. Implementing such changes could better unite the alterations. Our CVA committee also suggests the applicant consider aligning railing heights between this Juliet balcony and the rooftop patio. Landmark West's CVA committee finds this proposal to be appropriate, and we support this application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? Community Board Seven recommends approval, and they strongly recommend that some form of stone lintel be added to the bifold French door opening, but that's not really before us today, so, but that's what their comment was. Do we have any other questions? Okay, we can close the hearing. All right, any concerns? Okay, Ari?
In the matter of LPC one nine one five six six six, eighteen West Seventy-Fourth Street, in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, a Georgian Revival Style Row House with Bozart elements designed by Percy Griffin and built in nineteen oh four, the application's to enlarge window openings. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, and I recommend approval, finding that the proposed alterations to fenestration at the top floor will not be visible from any public thoroughfare; that the top floor of the rear facade has been altered and no longer features the three historic punched openings, therefore the proposed work will not eliminate the historic fenestration pattern; that the rear facades of the neighboring row houses and adjacent buildings feature a variety of top-floor lintel conditions and enlarged openings at the lower floors, therefore the proposed work will not affect any intact unified composition at the row; and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Commissioners, item number five on the agenda is an application for a certificate of appropriateness of Borough Manhattan, docket number nineteen zero nine nine zero two. This is twenty-three West Sixty-Ninth Street, located within the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. It's a Renaissance Revival Style Row House designed by Gilbert, a challenger, and built in eighteen ninety-two. The application is to replace windows, construct rooftop and rear yard additions, and to alter the rear facade.
Good morning, Commissioners. Edith Bellihasen, Preservation Staff. The subject property is located on the north side of West Sixty-Ninth Street, between Columbus Avenue and Central Park West. The commission will note that the adjacent properties of this large apartment building and that this is the subject property, which is not one of the row to the west. The proposal before you today consists of three parts. The first part of the proposed work is the construction of a one-story rooftop addition, which will not be visible from the street. There's an existing addition that is being reconstructed. Additionally, the second part is the construction of a full-height rear yard addition, set slightly forward of the plane of the existing rear facade. The proposal also entails a reconstruction of an existing three-story L within the existing footprint. The work of the rear facade is also not visible from the street. And then the third part is for window replacement at the West Sixty-Ninth Street facade, removing all nonhistoric windows and replacing them with one-over-one simulated double home windows, matching everything except operation. And the applicants are here to review this proposal and answer their questions.
My name is Andrew Verslone, the architect, and this is Mary Duritz, the historical and preservation consultant. She's just going to give a little background on this building. Thank you, Andrew. Mary Duritz, the preservation consultant. Good morning. This, as Edith actually said, this is an orphan row house, built in eighteen ninety-two. When you look at the rear facades, you'll see a whole full row adjacent, and that was a row of age built in eighteen ninety-five to six. So these, this row house here, its row was that way, so it's that apartment building and that apartment building, so there no longer there anymore. And I could go to add to the presentation.
Thank you. How do you do? Okay, all right. So, so that's clear, that what I also wanted to point out is that the cornice, the floors, and nothing here on the front lines up with the adjacent houses. And here is the block plan, showing the location. It's about two hundred and thirty feet off Central Park, and you can see that the buildings that, where the row used to be occupied are now occupied by two very large buildings, a fourteen-story and a nine-story building. So here's the first section of our presentation, the roof addition and the rear yard addition. This, this slide shows the row in the back and how the adjacent townhouses do align in the rear yard. And it shows also, in the front, the facades of twenty-three to thirty-three are in the same plane, but twenty-five to thirty-three are aligned at the cornice. Harbor twenty-three has a taller cornice, and the floor lines are different. That's, once again, as mentioned. Okay, here, this is important because in the rear, you can see that the townhouse twenty-five, which is just to the, to the west, does not align in, the facade does not align, nor does the extension align, as you can see in the upper left slide there. And the, also the cornices and the floor levels do not align, so it's definitely the north in there. And here, this shows the roof. The, this is the, this is the roof of the current addition, the fifth floor. It overlooks the fourth floor, and the, the fifth floor roof has access both to the back, which is here, and also to the front here. So there's a little terrace, both on the back and the front. The front has currently this sort of greenhouse extension that we plan to remove and replace. And, let's see, here, this also shows a solarium that currently exists on the L on the extension, and you can see clearly here how the two extensions in the back do not align. This is just the site plan, showing the existing here and our proposed. What we propose to do is create a two-foot, three-and-five-eighths-inch rear addition, which brings us to the maximum thirty-foot required rear yard setback. So that, that addition would be continuous along the entire rear facade. We also plan to reconstruct the existing L with glass in the exact same footprint. Here is the sideline diagram showing the existing condition of the, of the house. There's the fifth floor with the front and rear terraces. Here is the massing. Here is the proposed, we're adding HVAC unit, this is the elevator bulkhead, which is the permitted weight obstruction, and we're simply filling in a very small little chunk there of the fifth floor to even it out. On the rear, we're, we are adding the two and, two-foot, three-inch extension there. Here, this, this just shows the, the glass greenhouse that currently exists. Up here is being replaced by a, a new construction with a glass facade. None of this can be seen from the street. I'm just, these are the elevations. This is the existing rear elevation. You can see that the townhouse has been modified quite a bit, the third floor, the top floor, and the greenhouse here, and then modifications there as well. We propose a rear facade of all glass and the extension as well in glass. The upper floor would be clad in material, a cementitious plank material called oco skin, and where the owner's desire here was to get light into the back. This, this tall building here prevents light from entering the building, and it's also a north facade, and just also as a facade, he also owns this building, so he's lived here for about twelve years, so he's aware of the sort of lap of light back there. This is the side elevation, existing and new, of the extent, where you can see the extension, the east elevation. This is the west, existing. You can see the solarium that's going to be removed. You can see the outline of the adjacent house, which doesn't align. And this is the new, this is the new proposed. Here's the small extension on the rear. This is the elevator bulkhead. It's pretty much, you can see on that, this is just the elevation of the shaft area between the tall building to the, to the east. Here is rendering, showing the existing facade and the proposed. We try to honor the, the, the existing floor lines and the existing fenestration. Of course, as you can see, nothing, nothing aligns with the building next door. Here, it's maybe easier to see. It's, it's very, it's very tucked in there. It's at the end of, of a, of a row of, these, these, these townhouses align and are a part of a row, and this is the last one, the orphan, and here is the tall building next door. So it's, it's definitely not like a disruption in a continuous row, like it's, like a missing tooth or something. It's very much at the end and tucked in here by this fourteen-story building. This is the rooftop mock-up, just so you can see the elevator bulkhead and the HVAC units. None of this can be seen from the street. Let's see. Here are the proposed materials. This is the, this, this would be black. It was, the sample was given to us in anodized, but this is the color of the proposed curtain wall. The curtain wall has to be fire-rated, so this is a fire-rated curtain wall section. This is the proposed color here. Here is the oco skin that's going to go on the fifth floor. That's the cementitious plank material. Here are window sections, curtain wall sections, if you're interested in how it's going to rate, relate to the existing masonry. I could go through that if you have questions. These are just different sections. Here are the key plans, showing where these are taken. More, this is like a head and sill section. Another, another set of, another set of sections here. This is the, okay, so these are the floor plans. Basically, kind of the thing to notice is the, the addition there. And the, here, on the, on the top floor, the, the addition is just here, just a little infill there in the elevator bulkhead is the other portion. So that's the new roof plan. So the shaded areas are the, are the new areas. This is the existing greenhouse, which is just going to be rebuilt. The window replacement on the Sixty-Ninth Street facade is shown because the windows are, they appear as double homes, they're simulated, but they have, they have tilt-turn. They look the same. What we are, we are correcting the fact that these windows were not curved, they were put in as square, we're adding the brick wall back, all of that. The windows have a, have, have a passive house capability, though we're not going for a passive house here, but the owner wanted to be as energy efficient as, as possible where possible. So again, here, here's just the, the, the upper sash is fixed, the lower sash is tilt-turn.
Okay. Okay. Are there any questions? All right, why don't we take testimony? The commission may have questions after that. Anna Sifter?
Good morning, Commissioners. Anna Sifter for Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee carefully reviewed the applicant's proposal for alterations to the roof, rear facade, and the rear yard of number twenty-three. While our committee found the proposed rooftop addition to be utilitarian and appropriate, we are concerned by the replacement of the historic punched openings at, in the rear by large expanses of glazing. The applicant's proposal would, in essence, eliminate the original rear facade, replacing it with an excess of glass and steel. We would recommend the applicant retain at least the punched openings on the top floor of the rear facade in accordance to LPC standards, and better yet, retain the punched openings on the top two levels. Furthermore, while we concede that the rear facade affords distance from the property directly behind, we note with concern the proximity of the side elevation of the dogleg to the windows of number nineteen next door. The excessive fenestration on the side of the renovated dogleg would set us stage-ready for a remake of rear window with the neighbors' windows less than ten feet away from the applicant. We would recommend a more reserved approach to this section of the extension. As it stands, this redesign is more Soho loft than residential Upper West Side. Landmark West's CVA committee recommends the applicant work with staff to devise a design more in harmony with its surroundings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Patrick Waldo.
Good morning, Commissioners. Patrick Waldo, Historic District's Counsel. HTC opposes this proposal, which is described on the docket as an alteration to a rear facade, but is actually an application to construct an entirely new curtain wall. This addition would leave only the facade of the building intact. As proposed, the all-glass mast displays no differentiation between floors and does not salvage any historic material. The proposed replacement with a metal and curtain wall cube certainly does not seem to be in keeping with the character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, and we would like to see examples of where this has been permitted in the district, as we could not determine any. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? Community Board Seven recommends approval of the front facade, window replacement, rooftop additions, and HVAC unit locations, and disapproves the rear facade extension and rear yard addition renovation work. Do we have any additional questions for the team? All right, we can close the hearing.
Well, I think the application is most significant for what it doesn't do. Doesn't disrupt the consistency of a row. It doesn't add significantly to the footprint, doesn't infringe on the donut, and it's barely vis, the rooftop addition is not visible from anywhere. And I would say it's appropriate until I get to the dramatic difference between the existing rear facade and the, and the proposed. So I'm hesitating on it. I'm not sure I would vote against it, but there's a heck of a lot of glass and metal. And on the other side, you know, I'll try to figure out, well, who could actually see this at all, even from the rear, in its precious few ways to see it, because it's tucked so neatly in that corner. So I'm, I'm a bit torn on the, on that rear facade.
Okay. Yes, Brad and Benadi.
Oh, sorry. I'm not torn.
Me neither.
It was described as, as an orphan, meaning that the row to which it was once attached is now gone, and a fourteen-story building is adjacent to it. It's not visible from anywhere. My own view of the rear, although historic... My own view of the rear, although historic, is exceedingly plain jane and doesn't to my mind have much architectural merit. If this is what the owner wishes to do, I, I don't see a reason to deny it, honestly. I, I think it's okay. I think it's actually handsome. I think these drawings finally convinced me of it. The earlier drawings were shaky. Wasn't so sure that it had any architectural merit, but I think it, it does. I know that we've had a longstanding notion that the top floor windows, when intact, you know, ought to be retained, the punched openings. But I think under our current chair, she's convincing us to not necessarily always think that way. And I think this is a good example of why we shouldn't always think that way. In other words, let's just accept that this is a new facade, a new 21st century facade. So I can see why people might be torn. All the, all the testimony was against it, and maybe I'll be alone here supporting it, but so be it.
Nady?
I agree entirely. And the top floor is already sort of irregular and has been modified. So I, I think, as Fred does, that this is a new facade and so works well and is, it is not seen.
Others? Yes, Kim?
I tend to agree with everybody else that it's a new facade and it wasn't, it was never part of a row. And so there's no need to match the windows. And if their client wants to have that much glass facing the other building, I might not, but they might. It's, it's their right to. It's, nobody's going to see it. It's really just the larger building that's going to see it.
Yes. I think that, I'm, I'm with John on this one. I understand the arguments about the aesthetic permissibility or approvability of the facade. I think that the, the basis, in my opinion, for having a second thought is, is the notion of preserving historic material when possible. And I think that as, I think generally speaking, our, our, our desire in retaining some measure of masonry on the rear has to do not only with, with the aesthetics of it, but with the notion that, you know, this is historic material and we try to preserve it where possible. I think that certainly in the, in the upper two floors, the, the need, the need, I don't, you know, we don't really talk about the need, but I think that the, the notion of retaining the masonry is, is important. And I think that we have done that relatively consistently. I can't recall a whole lot of examples where we let people remove all the historic material on a particular facade.
We've done it a few, few times. And I, just to that point, and since Commissioner Bland raised this issue, I, it is true, I've often sort of questioned that policy in each and every situation. And I think, so I would just sort of articulate my thinking about it. There's some places where it's absolutely critical and it's, it's, I think in general, a very good policy. Very often, we find ourselves looking at buildings that are part of a row, and its continuity is critical. And also, not only in terms of an overall ensemble, but also in terms of the individual building. So there is a basis for that that I respect. I think sometimes you have these interesting situations where things have already changed, the building's one-off, it's at the end. And there is something about, in my mind, a unified design that works. And so in some cases, I feel introducing that or requiring that takes something else away from what's being proposed. So that was my thinking about it, but in general, we follow that policy, and it's a good policy. I think in this particular case, I don't feel so strongly about retaining the punched openings on the top floor. I think, as you noted, it's already modified and doesn't have that regularity, and also it's end condition. So, so from that perspective, I think holding on to that policy is not absolutely necessary. I think that we, we're really just talking about a facade over here. Those other changes, square footage, those are not really, I mean, it's so small, it's probably could have been done at staff level. It's really that the rear facade is, is taking a different approach. And given its location at the end and the adjacent building, I could support it as well. So, okay, are, are there, let me just see. Michael, no, and John, where are you on this?
Okay.
Okay, all right. So, Kim, do you want to read that?
In the matter of 23 West 69th Street, Upper West Side, his, what, Upper West Side, Central Park Historic District, a Renaissance Revival rowhouse designed by Gilbert Schelger and built in 1892. Application is to replace windows, construct rooftop, and rear yard additions, and alter the facade. I note that the style, scale, materials, and details of the building are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features of the building, that the proposed rooftop and rear yard additions will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, that the proposed one-story rooftop addition, similar in height and footprint to the existing rooftop addition, will be set back from the front in rear facades and will retain a sense of the building's original scale and massing, that other rear yard incursions and larger apartment buildings exist within the block, and therefore, the proposed rear yard addition will not eliminate the presence of a rear yard, that the existing rear facade does not align with the rear facades of the adjacent buildings, and the building is not part of a row. Therefore, constructing a new full-height rear yard facade set slightly forward of the existing plane will not significantly, significantly alter the scale of the building or diminish its relationship to the adjacent buildings, that the proposed reconstruction of the rear L will maintain the same massing and footprint of the existing addition and therefore will not overwhelm this building or the adjacent buildings, that the general design of the rear facades, featuring large window openings and aluminum and glass, will be articulated with mullions and to give scale and rhythm to the glazing, and will recall the contemporary manner and divisions of the floor levels of the original building, that the proposed windows on the West 69th Street facade will closely match the historic windows in terms of material, configuration, details, profiles, finishes, and dimensions, that the fixed upper sash will be in a different plane from the lower sash, replicating the appearance of the historic window sashes, that the change in operation of the lower sashes, sash will only precipitate when the sash is open, that the work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building or the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed. Application approved.
Okay, Commissioners, item six on the agenda is an application for a certificate of appropriateness, the Borough of Manhattan, docket number 1913615. This is 321 West 103rd Street, located within the Riverside West End Historic District, Extension Two. This is a Renaissance Revival style rowhouse designed by Martin V. B. Feredin and built in 19, 1891 to 92. The application is to alter the front facade and areaway.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hallie Hughes, Preservation Staff. This item is 321 West 103rd Street, located between West End Avenue and Riverside Drive in the Riverside West End Historic District, Extension Two. The proposal is to alter the front facade and the areaway. Anita Brandt is here to elaborate and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a, we'll hear the three photographs of the current condition, the 1980s and the 1940s, which does show the original stoop, which is currently not planned to be restored. The current conditions are, right now, the building is being restored. The brownstone, the paint is being removed, and the beautiful brownstone ornamental detailing is being restored. What we propose here is the modification of this white brick storefront type of door to the basement, plus the, the areaway surround or bulkhead, which is currently a metal railing, and also restoring the, the surface of the areaway to be a bluestone paving. This is our proposal. Specifically, the door would be a new solid wood door. The entrance and the surround would be in the brownstone to match the current, current restoration brownstone color. And on either side of the entry would be these hammered brick textured blocks, if you will, which is present elsewhere on the facade. Actually, it's around the curb of this beautiful bay window. The surround or bulkhead, we've taken inspiration from the row-up buildings to the east and registered the elevations and the heights of the paving and added these newel posts to show respect to the original without being an exact duplicate. This is a comparison of the existing and our proposal. This is our new basement entry surround. This is a close-up of the brownstone bulkhead and piers. This is a comparison of, of what we found and what we hope to accomplish. These are some pictures from the adjacent buildings. The ones on the right are blowups of the 1940s photograph, which is, it's a little unfortunate the way the light is falling, but we can make out that it's a similar bulkhead to the building, just adjacent to it. And finally, this is showing other entries and bulkheads down the street that are not actually historic, but I guess they have a certain resemblance to it. So that's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Questions? Right, we have one speaker. Anna Sifter?
Good morning again, Commissioners. Anna Sifter for Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee has reviewed the applicant's proposal to replace metal railings with a new bulkhead and newel posts, to install a new door and entrance surround, and to set new brownstone steps and bluestone pavers. We commend the applicant's for their use of materials appropriate to the landmark. As the changes proposed do not preclude future reconstitution of the whole stoop, our committee supports this application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? Community Board Seven recommends approval of this application. Do we have any other questions? Any questions? All right, we can close the hearing. Yes. Okay, I think they've done, it's a very sensitive job, and I think it works well, and it's been consistent with the district as well in the streetscape. All right, Michael?
Okay. Regarding 321 West 103rd Street in the Riverside West End Historic District, Extension Number Two, the application is to alter the front facade and areaway. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Riverside West End Historic District, Extension Two, and I recommend approval, finding that the original brownstone facade was all deprived of the designation with the removal of its stoop, relocation of the entrance to the basement floor, and painting of the facade. Therefore, the proposed work at the base of the building will not eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed rusticated brownstone stucco base will match the profile and details found at the upper floors of this rowhouse and at other buildings in the row. Therefore, we'll help to bring the rowhouse closer to its historic appearance at the proposed door surround, featuring protruding cornice profiled door frame will complement the proportions and profiles existing at the first floor of the rowhouse and won't detract from the significant architectural features of the building. That the proposed areaway wall featuring brownstone stucco paneling, newel posts, and areaway steps will recall features found at this row, and therefore will have a harmonious relationship within the streetscape, and that the proposed work will enhance the special architectural and historic character of the building, streetscape, and Riverside West End Historic District, Extension Two.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay, Commissioners, item number seven is an application for a certificate of appropriateness, docket number 1913854, Borough of Brooklyn, 195 Midwood Street, in the Prospect Lefferts Gardens Historic District. This is a neo-Renaissance style house designed by Benjamin Dreisler and built in 1909, and the application is to replace windows installed without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits.
Good morning, Commissioners. Abby Harlberg, Preservation Staff. Application is to replace windows throughout the front facade at the building at 195 Midwood Street, which is located on the north side of Midwood between Rogers and Bedford Avenues and the Prospect Lefferts Historic District. The existing double-hung windows were replaced without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits by a previous owner. However, they did not replace the historic windows. At the time of the designation of the Historic District, the historic windows had already been replaced. The historic windows, as you can see from this 1940s tax photograph, would have been wood, one-over-one double-hung windows featuring curved glass, and at the time of designation, they were straight glass. The owner is proposing to install wood, one-over-one, double-hung windows with straight heads and straight glazing. I'm going to take you through this real fast so you can see the, the sections of the proposed wood with the profiled brick mold and straight glazing. And the owner is here to discuss the proposal in detail.
Hi, my name is David Iozzi. I'm here with my white Floridian. We purchased this property back in June. We purchased it with an open violation for the windows. We spoke with Landmarks in advance and understood at the time that the violation was because the windows were vinyl. We've since been told that the ruling is we would have to replace them with curved glass. Before we closed on the house, we researched the replacement cost for flat glass, looked at other houses in the block. As far as we can tell, there are no other houses with curved glass on our block or the neighboring blocks in the Historic District. About half the houses are the barrel front, about half are not. We also purchased the house with a variety of problems. The roof leaks, some of the bathrooms were, the basement and first floor were filled with mold, and most of the pipes have cracks in them. So we engaged an architect in advance, submitted plans to move forward with the window replacement shortly after, and the other renovations shortly after closing, and then ran into the, the curved glass issue. We got an estimate for that. The estimate was more than four times the cost of replacing with flat glass. And notably, the estimate for the curved glass specified that the windows came without a warranty. We also explored curved windows with one other contractor who indicated that his bid would be more than the first one, curved glass. Since then, we've encountered a couple unexpected things. We've gone through the full mold remediation. We've gone through a full asbestos remediation, which we weren't expecting, which has eaten up a lot of our budget. And now to move forward, we need to file our DOP permits, and we need to either clear the violation or have the okay to move forward without the window replacement being completed first. We have already received several estimates. We're ready to move forward with the windows, and we're ready to move forward with our DOP applications to make the house happen. It's been vacant for two years. If you ask the seller, six or seven It's been vacant for two years, if you ask the seller, six or seven years if you ask the neighbors. So, what we're asking for are two things. First, that we be able to replace the windows with wood one-over-one double-hung windows in the entire front facade. We want to make the house nice, we want to make it look like the other houses with new wood windows on the block, and we're all set on that front. The other thing we're asking for is time to complete the replacement, as stated in a lot of other issues with the house. We're currently living with my wife's parents and would like to get to a point where we can replace the plumbing, get functioning bathrooms, move into the house, and then proceed with the window replacement. So, ideally, what we would like is the ability to get the proof with flat glass, and then certainly time till sometime next year, ideally, maybe here, to replace all of the windows. That's our question, our recommendation. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Yes.
I think you said that there are no remaining curved glass windows on the block. Is that right? That's what you said?
That's right, and there are a couple other renovations happening on the block right now. One of them is a curved front, and they have just installed flat glass.
Flat. But the understanding is that this row originally had curved glass, is that right?
That's the...
Well, on the curve, I guess they're not all curved. I mean, there's some flat pieces too.
I, to be honest, I can't tell, but that's the determination of Landmarks, is that the original windows were curved. Thank you.
Are there any speakers on the side? Any speakers?
Do you care about the brick mold, the brick mold on the recommendation?
Right. Well, just let me just find out, are there any speakers? No speakers, and Community Board has not weighed in. So, I just have a question for staff. We've allowed a wood window replacement in this neighborhood before?
Well, you know, on these, the sort of the three-faced bays, not bays, the projecting Ls, there would be a straight, yes, it would be a straight double-hung window, but these curved bays historically did have the exterior radius radial glass. So, if you, these are, this photograph was taken at the time of designation, so some of these may have already been changed, but looking at the historic photograph, you can tell that there is that subtle curve to the glass in the curved bays.
Right, but I just, I guess my question is, have we allowed for flat glass to replace the curved glass?
At public hearing in the past, we have.
We have, okay. That's what I just wanted to find out.
Yeah.
But I think what you're saying is that a part of that was a detail which would allow for the curved brick mold, is that right too?
That's, that's right.
So, okay.
What was that, what was the last thing?
So, it's the, maybe there's a, right, it's to sort of have a mold which actually sort of curves, so you don't have this, yeah, so it's a detail that I think the staff has worked with other owners before, and it allows them to have the flat glass, but it's really the detailing in the mold. And I think, I would recommend that in this particular case as well, because I think it's worked well in other cases. And I think, you know, they have, you know, this violation, and they have these vinyl windows, but bringing back brick, I think, would really help unifying the streetscape. Are there any concerns? Yes, Fred?
My next-door neighbor has just gone through this herself and went to the huge expense of getting curved glass. It was a real hardship for her, actually, but she did it, and they wouldn't even guarantee the window.
Yeah.
Oh, did you say that as well?
They said that they're not getting the warranty.
Yeah, so, it's, I think it's a real hardship. In the case of my neighbor's house in Brooklyn Heights, I think the case was made a little more compellingly that the house really should have it. I don't think here it's so compelling visually. The fact that there are no other on the block remaining, I think, is also compelling. So, I'm just saying a little more personally how I can, I can support this based on that experience of my, of my neighbor, but I will say, welcome to homeownership.
Just want to clarify whether we want, still want the proper brick molding.
Yeah, they'll work with staff on the brick mold.
Okay.
I would just add just how beautiful curved glass is.
Yes.
I mean, so, it's, it's a loss in this building, it's a loss on the block, and I don't know what it will take for it to kind of come back, you know, because it really is an extraordinarily beautiful feature.
Right, and I think in sometimes, you know, we've seen individual landmarks, for example, so this is a building, one row house within a district, I think its context is a little bit different, and we have an individual landmark, and there's a significant renovation being done and a reuse of that building, then there are definitely points where the commission would want to continue to see curved glass, and we've done that recently. So, I don't think we'll lose curved glass forever, but I do think that when we're talking about individual homeowners in Historic Districts where the street already has, you know, every one of those buildings have, have already transitioned out of the curved glass, then I think it's a setting. Okay.
In the matter of one ninety-five Midwood Street, Prospect Lefferts Gardens Historic District, the application is to replace windows installed without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. Noting the building's style, scale, materials, and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Prospect Lefferts Gardens Historic District, I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the historic windows were not present at the time of the designation of the Historic District. Therefore, no significant architectural features of the building were replaced, that no historic curved glass windows exist in the row, therefore, the installation of flat glass windows is consistent with the fenestration of the row, and that the proposed wood one-over-one double-hung windows and profiled brick molds will be in keeping with the historic windows in terms of configuration, operation, material, finish, and basic profiles and design. However, I recommend that the applicant work with the staff that a bow, a brick mold be added at the head of this to better fit the shape of the opening and to recall the historic sash.
All in favor? Any opposed? This application's approved.
Okay, Commissioners, item eight is an application for a certificate of appropriateness to Borough of Brooklyn, document number nineteen six four one eight. This is one eleven Noble Street, located within the Greenpoint Historic District. This is a wood frame house constructed in eighteen fifty-five and heavily altered in the twentieth century. The application is to demolish the existing house and construct a new building.
Egbert Stoll, Preservation Staff, and I present to you an application for one hundred eleven Noble Street, which is located between Franklin Street and Manhattan Avenue in the Greenpoint Historic District. The proposal is to demolish the existing wood frame two-story-plus basement house and construct a three-story-plus penthouse residential building. Ralph, the architect of the project, will further explain the proposal to you.
My name is Ralph Mayer from MDM Design. I was hired by the developer and homeowner, Roy Paz, to actually put a proposal together and put a design together in the first place that would actually look in the existing condition and see like what we can do with the existing building. At a, very early on, we asked the owner of the house to actually retain a structural engineering firm, basically look into the condition of the existing building, and he went forward and hired a company, Flex Engineering, to put a proposal together and see like what the existing condition currently is. The report from the engineering firm came back as it being in a fairly bad condition, a very bad condition, where we went forward and hired a second engineering firm, Severoot Engineering, Mohamed Rahal, who looked into, took more probes, basically, and looked into the existing building, which you see on the right of this image, to basically look into the existing structure and what could be done in order to save this building. What we did was, as you see, like the building to the left, that's the original building, was built in nineteen fifty-five for investment purposes. On the right, you see a photograph of what the building currently looks like. You see everything in the front was pretty much changed, the windows were changed. Between nineteen eighty-two and now, like there was a plastic siding put on, the wood columns in the front were replaced with brick, the front railings were replaced with plate brick, and so on. The building before nineteen eighty-two, you see to the left, was altered also heavily. There was awnings put on top of the windows, windows were replaced previous to the Landmarks Designation District being put into place. There was tar siding on it, the awning that you have currently on was already there, but brick and so on was basically placed on the bottom of the building, which I think gives it a rather different appearance from its original intent, which is a very fragile building. We took probes, we looked into the facade, like what's there originally, what was there originally, and what is there right now. We went, took off the siding, we took off the tar shingles, and basically what you see on the left is an image, basically, that points out where we, where we basically looked into the facade. Here you see deteriorated material underneath sheathing, which appears to be almost like a soundboard application underneath the tar. That was altered to the tar prior to nineteen eighty-two, and after that, basically, the plastic siding was put on. Here's some more probes, basically, when you, which basically also look at the condition of the frame. There was nothing of the original siding on this anymore. So, all you see here, basically, was material that was put place, would put into place prior to nineteen eighty-two, except the plastic siding was basically put in place after nineteen eighty-two. The, what I would like to do, please, is I would like to invite Mr. Mohamed Rahal from Severoot Engineering to the podium very quick to basically explain what he found when he took probes of the buildings. Those images, basically, were taken by him, and I would like him to come up very quick and basically talk to you to explain the structural condition of the current building.
My name is Mohamed Rahal, professional engineer. I'm with Severoot Associates. We were hired by the owner to do a structural condition survey of this building. I did the survey on March thirtieth of this year. Basically, the, my main findings, that you can see in some of the photos here, hopefully, is that all the brickwork in front, that was done in front, was kind of done poorly, and now it's in a condition where sections of the, of the front brickwork are unstable, and I don't believe they, they can withstand code-prescribed forces for railings. This is in the picture on the bottom middle and on the top left, where there's some conditions where I felt that both the railing on the porch and the railing between the sidewalk and the front yard are unstable, and the one between the sidewalk and the front yard is also very unstable to the touch, and you can just push it with your hand, and that thing can come down. Other findings, this is a wood frame building, and you've got rubble foundation walls, there's no picture of it here. I think there's one picture on the bottom left there that shows all the mortar and the rubble foundation walls loose, so now, you know, the wood frame is sitting on loose rubble here, and in some cases, it's in very bad shape. The picture on the top right, one of the findings was the first floor joists are not properly bearing on the rubble foundation walls. In some cases, a lot of the joists, the majority of the joists are only bearing to a very small extent on the rubble foundation wall, and as a result, the first floor sections adjacent to the west wall cannot withstand code-prescribed forces from the floor, because the joists have nothing, there's no blocking between them to restrain them from rotation. Another, this is probably the most important finding, is, is in the back of the building, looking at the west wall, this is shown kind of small, but on the bottom left there, you can see that the west wall exterior stud is bowed significantly, and I believe is unstable. And you can see that the exterior stud, the point of maximum bow is just below the first floor, which indicates that the stud itself is bowed. Adjacent to the same west wall, you can see that door there on the left, and the pictures don't do it justice, but in my experience, this is one of the most warped floors. This is called the second floor level or first floor level, but it's actually like above the sidewalk level. It's a suspended floor, and the section of floor, the joist adjacent to that wall, which is bowed, is also bowed very significantly towards the middle of the house, and that's a major concern for me, because it indicates that the bearing condition is very bad. And so, basically, the conclusion of this report was that, due to the extent of what was seen and the nature of the stability issues encountered during the site visit, all the observed signs of deformation and stress, we recommend that the structure be rebuilt.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
If, I mean, a lot of the things you're talking about with, with wood structures, are they repairable? I mean, if your client hires you to repair it instead of remove it, would it be repairable? Would these things be repairable, adding blocking, doubling the joists, things like that?
It would, it would be repairable, but the west wall would have to be replaced because of the fact that of the bowing of the west wall itself. So, you can, you can brace something, but if what you're bracing is not stable to begin with...
Right.
It's not going to be something that's feasible.
Okay. Thanks.
Wait, and the west wall is, the west wall is...
At the rear or in the front?
Party wall, party wall.
Oh, it's the party wall?
It's adjacent, it's not a party wall, it's adjacent to the...
To the gap.
To the gap.
Okay.
Which I believe the property line is on the wall, and there's a very small alleyway between the two buildings.
Right, it's at the lot line.
And the defects that you found in the front porch, I mean, that front porch was, is probably not the original one, right?
Right, that was...
But the front part, the brickwork is not original, so some of the discussion was on that, but what about the front facade? Just, is that...
The front facade, I mean, I did notice that there's a lot of locations where the current vinyl siding is coming off, and, you know, I don't know, there's a thing that you can clearly see on the west wall and the side, but I don't know what other joists have this same condition. To me, it's risky, because the amount of vinyl siding that I see coming off indicates that there's other areas that the, potentially, the wall joists, the wall studs have become bowed, or possibly, if it's exposed, and at the same time, getting water into it can be rotted.
You noted that there's a rubble foundation wall, and I may have missed it, if I did, I apologize. Did you notice anywhere where there was subsidence in that, in that foundation, or any problems with the foundation?
I didn't notice any signs of settlement in the foundation. The slab on grade was not cast at a perfectly level elevation. It's kind of thing where they just sort of dumped...
Lumpy.
They just dumped cement there, so the whole slab on grade is, is all over the place, so it's not something that I can look at a piece of normal slab and say, this crack indicates that, you know, there's some settlement here, but, so, it was kind of inconclusive.
But you didn't see any evidence in the structure above that would indicate that the foundations below... the foundations below are failing to the extent that the house is in danger of collapse or imminent problem?
My concern was limited to the section at the top of the rubble foundation wall above. I cannot, again, I cannot definitively say that there's any signs of settlement, but I can say that the way the rubble foundation wall is, the condition it is in now, with an, with a, the main stair just adjacent to that west wall, and then you have a condition where the first floor joists are not restrained against rotation, plus you have bowed exterior studs, that is my main concern. And the main concern is not to day-to-day usage, but during a windstorm, if heavy items are placed next to that wall on the floor, where it's already significantly bowed, during a windstorm with suction, could buckle out.
But if you added, if you added the blocking and redid the west wall, you think that it would be relatively sound from a structural point of view?
Yes, I think if that's rebuilt, and I don't know anything about the east wall. The probing was sort of, you know, concentrated on the area of concern visually.
Thank you.
Okay, are there other questions for the engineer? All right, please. Are there any, any other questions for the engineer right now? Okay, do you want to continue with your presentation?
So after those findings, we had a lengthy discussion with our client, and it was not an easy thing for us to move forward, because we know that it's a, it's a difficult proposition to make, to basically replace a building that is within a historic district. However, what we did was, we looked closely at the neighborhood, we looked closely at the block, we looked at the diversity of the buildings, we looked at the volume of the buildings. And what we found, basically, was that the block was very colorful, at least from half the way down to Noble. Further up in this particular area, you see mostly brick buildings. There's one brownstone in the center, there's again, brick building, and then from here on, from this line, towards Franklin Street, those are mainly wood frame buildings, basically. And the colors are ranging from a blue to a gray to a yellow to a green, where we basically thought, like, that we would like to blend our building, even though it's a brick building, not so much with red brick that's further up on the block in this particular area, but we're gonna go with a color that actually blends better into the lower block, where there's more diversity in regards to colors. What you see here, basically, different addresses, the map on the bottom, basically, shows the location of those different addresses. This particular red block is basically the building that we are proposing, the location of the building which we are proposing. So here's more examples when it comes to the block and the diversity. That's on the other side of the street, 98 Noble is further down. Gray building is right here, the blue building is right here. Our building, in regards to this, is pretty much right over here. There's more, there's red brick further up, which is this particular building, which has a different significance when it comes to our design proposal, which I would like to come back later on again. So you see a fairly large range of colors in this particular area when it comes to the lower portion of the block. This is the location right behind those trees, where you see this, this is basically 111 Noble Street. So this is the look from the upper portion of the, of Noble Street, where basically transition takes place of the brick building to the wood frame buildings or wood shingle buildings. So this is the building we propose. The building is lining up with the building to the right. For building code purposes, we have to line it up with the facade to the right, which is the closest to us. The current building is set back, as you can see here, about five feet. We're gonna bring this forward and line it up with the top portion of the existing building to the right. We choose to narrow the building visually speaking, and implement a little bit of a more modern approach on the corner, so the width of the building goes better with the slightly lower building to the left. Our building currently is proposed to the same height as the building to the right, which is 35 feet in height. The building to the left is approximately 28 feet, so it's about seven foot taller than the building to the left. Where the Boeing takes place, there's an alleyway right here, which you see here as well. So the building to the left is approximately three feet off the property line, and there's an alleyway which leads to the back. This portion is set back from the front, for it to pretty much lower the mass and make the mass smaller, so it doesn't look, it's overwhelming when it comes to the building to the left. The penthouse is set back significantly. This is the penthouse floor. There's a roof terrace that's approximately 16 feet. We did all our mock-up construction. We looked at the mock-up, basically, and where this is located currently does not, is not visible from any way of the street, nor is the bulkhead, basically, that's proposed for an elevator within the building needed by code for buildings four stories higher. Brick we propose is a Danish brick. It's called Peterson table, I have a sample here. It was used in New York several times now. It's a handmade brick. I particularly like the portion of it, it's an inch and a half by two feet. It's a very unique brick, I think. What we are proposing on the window areas, as you can see here, is basically a frame that narrows the window profile to a certain extent, and frames the building, I'm sorry, to give it a little more of a narrower look, and make the windows basically smaller as well. On the bottom of those, let me go back here, on the bottom of the windows, we are proposing a decorative element, basically, which is a steel-cut panel, which basically looks like that. The reason being, from our building, we just think the proportion of the windows look better. What I would like to point out to them, basically, is that there is other buildings on the block that basically have decorative elements underneath the windows, and we're sort of like leaning this decorative element for connection reasons onto other buildings that are on the block. The next image, basically, shows here the bulk of the current building versus our building. This is approximately 30 feet tall. Our building is about 35 foot tall. The building to the right is 35 foot tall, so we're basically leaning onto the building of the right. So this is the current condition of the existing building. This is what we propose. The penthouse on top is not visible from the street. You basically see the section of the, of the street, where we basically point at other buildings as well. As you can see, the building next to 113 is slightly higher again. This building is also almost as tall as our building. When you travel further up the block, where you get onto the, the brick starts right here, further up the block, you have a few brick buildings that are considerably higher, and basically would match pretty much with our penthouse floor when it comes to height. This red dotted line basically points out what the current footprint of the building is. The gray area right here basically shows like what our building proposal is. On the right, these are the footprints with 113 and 109 Noble Street.
Do you have a question?
Yes. Just, just a quick question. It seems that the, that the other buildings on the block, whether wood or brick...
Yes.
All have some kind of a stoop or a stair to the entry?
That is correct.
And yours is the only one that doesn't?
That's correct.
Just curious what your thinking was about that?
Well, there we would run into building department issues, because we would have to make the first floor handicap accessible. So the building department, we ran into this issue in another project we did, would not allow you any handicap lift anymore from the exterior. So it would be very, very difficult, basically, to make the building handicap accessible if we would propose a stoop in the front. What also would be the issue is, basically, that you, that those buildings are pretty much like right on the, on the property line. So a stoop, basically, most of those buildings have stoops that are actually reaching into street property. So if you look at a survey, for instance, like, that would not be possible as of now when it comes to building department regulations. So the only reason why there are stoops still basically there is because they're all grandfathered. But if you would leave the stoop where it is right now, we would basically fail meeting other obligations, which are basically that you cannot set back a 20-foot wide building. So you have to either line it up with the building to the left or building to the right. There's limitations. If the building has a certain width, then you can set it back to a certain extent, but if the building is only 25 foot wide, it actually has to, by law, line up with the building either to the right or the left. So, but we fully understand that there is, you know, like, an issue there when it comes to what potentially might fit better, but due to the fact that our building is actually, let me go back again, is, see the property line here? This is about two or three feet out. So at three foot, you basically would only get like three steps, but you can't provide the landing you actually need by code as well on your property. So a three-foot landing would not be possible, because you basically are at the location where the street wall has to be bowled.
Even if you're smart, the, the piece to the left or secondary entrance on grade?
Well, that's only for...
You had your recess. Do you, can you capture some in that recess?
I understand what you said. Well, this location, there is another thing, if you provide a residential building, you have to provide a secondary means of egress from a cellar that basically goes straight out onto the street. So the reason why we recessed this as well is because this particular stair has to start fairly far in to get to the level of the cellar. So if you look, for instance, let me show you, let me go a little further, which basically is the floor plan, right here. In this particular area, you see this stair here? This is basically the second means of egress that you have to have by law out of a cellar. So the recess area is also done because of the purpose that otherwise you don't have the headroom, basically, to get out there. So, so there is restrictions from the building department side that just make us do certain things, even so we do understand that they're controversial to a great extent.
And another question?
Yes, correct.
While you're on this subject. You've said that the law requires you, and you've set this building, the front facade of the building is adjacent to the neighbor, to the right, which is down...
You want me to go back to the top line?
Down page. Well, what I'm asking is, your renderings don't show that at all. LPC-08B suggests that your building is in front of... There you go, on the left. So what's that about?
Good point, you know?
Yeah, you're right. It doesn't look like it's in the same place.
Especially maybe with the actual... You're perfectly right. This, quite frankly, it's good that you bring this up, it's a mistake within the rendering. So if you look at all the plans, it has to, by law, line up.
Yeah.
But you're perfectly right. If I look at the building to the right, it doesn't line up, and otherwise I would see the, the window on the next door.
Yeah. And so the whole building is...
Right, I would basically see...
In the rendering, it's pushed back.
Yes. You're perfectly right, that's a mistake within the rendering that I did not catch. So this observation is actually right. Being quite frankly, I received, this rendering was requested last Thursday, so I received this rendering at 11:30 at night on Sunday. So when you look at these renders, you don't see that. So the current, the former renderings like this one, which is in the application for quite some time, you wouldn't see that this building sticks out in the rendering. But perfectly right, you're, this is exactly right, that this appears to...
Okay, you've answered the question, so.
I didn't mean to punish you. No. Let me go back to the floor plans. So those are the, the elevations from the side. This is the building outline to the right. This is what we propose. This is the elevation towards the west. This is the area which is recessed in this particular area. So this is the glass corner. Other than that, we are proposing a couple of lotline windows on the side that are not really visible from the street, because they are all set back approximately 40 feet, 35 to 40 feet, basically, from the street wall. Here again, the rendering and the elevation. This is the rear elevation, it basically follows the pattern of the front when it comes to the windows. We have proposed two balconies in the back as well, that are sticking out five foot in the rear, and then large windows in the back. We wanna create the brick, basically, throughout when it comes to the back and the front, but it's also wrapping back on the left side. So everything is pretty much visible from the street, but also the back is basically made of the same brick. Sections, can you see the proposed balcony? And the floor plans. We propose three units, the duplex units on the first floor, one unit on the second floor, and a duplex unit on the third floor. The first floor gets an egress basically out to the basement to yard as well, and has the reyard. There's a slight ramp going up, because the first floor is slightly lifted up, so we don't have to excavate too far. These are floor of floor units. This is the penthouse.
Should we use a little of the backyard of the buildings?
There is, yes. Let me go all the way back. There is an aerial view. There we go. Right here. That's where we are right now. This is the neighboring building. There's some that have, basically, have a larger extension in the back as well, that goes further out. This is 109, this is 113, and our building would end approximately four feet behind 113. But we also propose this balcony as well. No problem. Let me go back. Then you have cross-sections. What we propose in regards to the windows are European-made windows from Sapa. The windows are called linear. They basically are very fragile profiles, which is very difficult to find. We've used it, it was used once in a, like, in a building on 280 Metropolitan Avenue, so there you have a good example of a, of a fairly fragile-looking window. Reason being is because what they did, basically, is usually they look more bulky, because of the fact that they basically have this little insert. Visually speaking, if you're gonna put a wood panel here, it basically brings down the appearance considerably. This is just a section through the bottom. This is our stair, basically, posed from the cellar up onto the sidewalk. Here's just the, just the yard, the basement wall. This, basically, is the detail that cuts through the front. You have the windows, they have a real molyne always within the center, they're still tilt-and-turn windows, they're not double-hungry. This panel you see here is basically this panel that you have right here. It's, this is, this is just plexi, but it's gonna be a steel, steel-cut panel, basically, that's painted with, there is a color signature, it's called Deep Kaddar, which is exactly this color, which is gonna be picked as well for the window itself. The window buildup in the front is basically metal stud wall, there's brick underneath always, which is basically the brick I pointed out before. You have a metal panel behind, the finished panel, which is in the front with a small flashing. And basically above, this is a glass railing that goes up the required three foot six. And on top, it's always like this, the bulkhead, you have a coping stone, which is gonna be slightly darker than the actual brick we proposed, so we're gonna have a little enhancement on top as well. The corners are always set back by four feet. The front of it is basically a slightly darker brick, but the same model, but it's gonna be a little darker, so it sets itself apart. If I go back to the rendering again, I'll show you like where this, the transition, basically, takes place, which is really much right where the setback is. This portion is a little darker. This part is plantar boxes.
Okay.
We would like, we would like to basically propose plantar box in this area. There's more wall section details, there's more window details, basically, shows you like the fragility of the, of the window and the old buildings. And then we have just an image folder of architectural and of the brick, and how it would look if it's put in place, how it would look, basically, with a Kumaru wood panel, and what the diversity of the colors within the project are. It's the mock-up, and there's basically the architectural report right here with some more additional photos, if you've seen the presentation previously as well.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for the team right now? All right, you'll take testimony. Each person will be given three minutes, and the timer will go off. Thank you.
Hi, Jim Shelton from Usable Art Society of New York. Originally constructed in 1855, 111 Noble Street is a two-story wood frame house located within the Greenpoint Historic District. Although it underwent a series of changes throughout the 20th century, the alterations primarily consist of superficial modifications to its facade and front porch. Original window and door openings remain, and no visible additions have been constructed. The proposed demolition is premised on an interpretation of the building as a non-contributing property within the Greenpoint Historic District, as well as concerns about its structural integrity and lack of potential for rehabilitation. However, there is no such contributing... However, there is no such contributing or non-contributing designation in the nineteen eighty-two Greenpoint Historic District Designation Report, contrary to the owner's assertion. Additionally, the basic form of the building is still apparent and remains a viable candidate for restoration. Look no further than one oh five Noble Street for an example of a vinyl-shrouded ugly duckling transformed into a beautiful clapboard swan. The Municipal Arts Society Preservation Committee recognizes that one eleven Noble Street in its current form is limited in its representation of the character of the Greenpoint Historic District. However, its demolition would establish a concerning precedent regarding the future of a large number of similarly altered buildings in the neighborhood. There are several wood-framed structures within the district that exist in a similar state of repair, which have also experienced alterations to their facades and siding, including several on Noble Street alone. Allowing the demolition of one eleven Noble Street would risk establishing a standard wherein any number of designated buildings in disrepair could be viewed as potential redevelopment sites and would result in the loss of many more historic buildings within the district and beyond. Finally, um, any alterations to one eleven Noble Street should be contextual, if not restorative. Although the proposed building makes use of simple materials and respects the cornice line of the adjacent building, it has no relationship to the surrounding block or district. We respectfully ask that the Landmarks Preservation Commission work with the applicant to find a preservation solution for one eleven Noble Street. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Christabel Goff.
Christabel Goff for the Society for the Architecture of the City. It is sad to see this first step in the destruction of the Greenpoint Historic District. Completely alien in character, the proposed replacement building has not accidentally strayed from some of the new construction we've seen in the NoHo Historic District, where the perhaps still imaginary prospective residents would like to but could not afford to live. Demolishing an eighteen fifty-five two-story wood-framed house in a district of pronounced nineteenth-century character because there are additions and alterations is a horrible approach to historic preservation. If the neighborhood is worth designating in the first place, restoration to a compatible state is the responsible approach. Ostentatious densification and expansion for investment purposes has no place in the modest low-rise streets of a district like Greenpoint, which originally housed workers in the waterfront shipyards. Breaking the visual continuity and violating the historic character of the district negates the protection people expect from historic district designation and undercuts the authority of the law. One 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 Noble Street is described in the Designation Report as heavily altered. This is not to be equated with the recently adopted non-contributing or earlier no-style terminology as an historic structure in a largely in-plaid block, much of which was built before the Civil War. It deserves special consideration and special care, not demolition. And I'd like to add on a personal note, I was amused to hear the engineering report refer to difficulties with a rubble foundation and a bowed west wall. I happen to own a house with those problems and some others. And because we hired an engineer who is a preservation specialist, we are solving those problems, all of them in a house, which is probably in worse condition than this. And that is the right thing to do, I'm sorry to say, although they say self-praise is no recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Erman?
My name is Peter Erman. I have lived on Noble Street for twenty-one years. I have lived in New York all my life and I have worked as a real estate developer and contractor. This specific proposal to demolish one eleven Noble Street is an assault upon the Greenpoint Historic District and the concepts of landmarks. The physical problems cited in this proposal can probably be found in half the buildings in the district. This building can be repaired. If you allow this building to be demolished, you are setting a precedent inviting developers to demolish many of Greenpoint Historic Buildings. Currently, Greenpoint housing values will super-incentivize developers to duplicate the one eleven noble proposal of demolition. The engineering report in this proposal uses rhetorical techniques to make ordinary problems into life-threatening conditions, which could quote, "cause the building to collapse," unquote. Let me ask you something. If this building is so dangerous that it needs to be demolished, then why has the owner been renting the two apartments out almost since the day he bought it? Why have I seen little children coming in and out of the apartment? Why? Why isn't the owner worried that the dangerous conditions could maim or kill his tenants? Why isn't the owner worried about the moral and financial liability risks? Maybe because there aren't any risks. Maybe the house is safe and sound and can be repaired. The owner is a developer. He knew this was a landmark district before he bought the property. He was perfectly capable of assessing the physical condition of the building before he bought it. There is no financial hardship. The facade of this building can be restored to its original condition. It's really quite a standard restoration. The porch can be rebuilt. Or they can leave the facade as is and keep renting the apartments as they are doing right now. The residents of Greenpoint depend upon the Landmarks Commission to protect this district from proposals like this. In conclusion, this specific proposal is a Trojan horse threatening every building in the Greenpoint Historic District and the integrity of the concepts of landmarks.
Thank you. The next speaker is Patrick Waldo.
So I have two pieces of testimony reading on behalf of Preservation Greenpoint, who could not be here today. Preservation Greenpoint vehemently opposes the proposed demolition of one eleven Noble Street, an eighteen fifty-five frame house that was one of the first structures on the street. Despite superficial and reversible alterations, the integrity and historic significance of the house remain intact. The wood buildings in this district are one of the character-defining and unique aspects of the Greenpoint Historic District, and the applicant has not shown why this building contributes less than other similar buildings in the district. Furthermore, we question the reported condition of the home, as it is currently inhabited and exhibits typical repairable conditions for a building of its age. We are deeply concerned that if approved, this demolition would create a precedent for the unnecessary loss of similarly altered buildings in the Greenpoint Historic District and within other historic districts citywide. In recent years, Preservation Greenpoint has been pleased to support successful restoration projects that the Landmarks Preservation Commission has enabled, each of which return altered historic buildings to their original appearance through the use of historic photographs and archival research. This includes the magnificent, award-winning restoration of Karamas Hall at eight fifty-seven eight sixty-one Manhattan Avenue, and most recently, the successful proposal at two eighteen Guernsey Street. If this demolition is approved, we worry that this promising trend of stewardship that the LPC has been fostering in our historic district would be reversed, and any landmark property in need of repair will be viewed as a potential redevelopment site. There are many reclatted buildings in the Greenpoint Historic District, many with less integrity than one eleven Noble Street. If the commission allows the demolition of this building, which still retains its basic form and massing, it creates a veritable open season in which our historic buildings will be replaced with designs that have no relation to the surrounding street or neighborhood. Preservation Greenpoint respectfully urges the commission to deny this application. Thank you. And this is on behalf of the Historic District Council. HTC strongly opposes this application, which seeks to erase a hundred sixty years of neighborhood history for one person's financial gain. This house should be restored to its original historic condition. Fortunately, we have clear evidence of what that original appearance was. This work could be done for a fraction of the expense of building a new building. In a letter to the Chair of the Community Board, the applicant states that the changes in the facade, quote, "led to one eleven Noble Street being a non-contribution building to the Greenpoint Historic District," end quote. This is flat-out false. While the terms contributing and non-contributing, as well as style and no style, appear in other designation reports, they aren't mentioned a single time in the Greenpoint Designation Report. In labeling this building non-contributing, the applicant has taken on the role of Landmarks Preservation Commission, deciding for themselves what buildings are and are not worthy of landmark status. Our committee would prefer these decisions be made by the commission, not by third parties looking to profit off of the destruction of historic buildings. An accurate reading of the Designation Report is helpful, however, in understanding that Noble Street contains, quote, "some of the earliest houses erected in the district," end quote. And while this house, which dates back to eighteen fifty-five as listed as, quote, "heavily altered," similarly altered houses in the district have been restored successfully. Two eighteen Guernsey Street is a perfect example of one such property, a heavily altered historic frame house that has been gracefully restored and returned to its original appearance. One eleven Noble sits among other houses on the street that could be similarly restored. The houses on either side of one eleven retain a lot of their original detail. It would be a shame to destroy a part of this block with so much historic potential, leaving no chance for historic continuity. The Greenpoint Historic District Designation Report details the importance of houses such as one eleven Noble. According to it, quote, "These early frame structures occupy an important place within the district and in the city. Some were built individually by shipwrights and shipcarpenters connected with the nearby shipyards. Although most have now been resurfaced with modern materials, the original mass, size, scale, and window arrangement remain, as does the underlying framing, which tangibly link them with one of New York's most romantic eras, the Age of Graceful Wooden Ships," end quote. Greenpoint is a rare historic district in that it provides a glimpse at a vernacular neighborhood with houses that weren't built for the wealthy. They were instead built for people who worked on the docks, for middle-class New Yorkers who kept the city running. That's the beauty of this historic district. Permitting the demolition of this historic house sets a dangerous precedent for many other buildings in this historic district and districts throughout the city, essentially communicating to developers, in this case, the owner is an appraiser and works in real estate, that landmarked properties can be torn down and replaced with luxury apartments. We urge the commission not to let Greenpoint, a neighborhood tangibly linked to New York City's romantic era of graceful wooden ships, be turned into a neighborhood whose only tangible link is to an era of excessive greed and careless destruction of culture, history, character, and community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Howard Kochan.
My name is Howard Koschan and I reside at ninety-five Noble Street. I come here today on behalf of the community, which consists of approximately seventy households and two houses of worship, to speak against the demolition and new development at one eleven Noble. In October of two thousand and sixteen, the community residents learned of the owner's purchase, and a short time later, on public social media, he announced his plan for the development, which included one of the renderings that we've seen today. Uh, on March twentieth, the owner developer, Mr. Paz, and his architect came before the community board meeting. And at that meeting, uh, he stated that an engineer had conducted a detailed examination of the building and determined that the house is in such disrepair that it would be cost-prohibitive for any repair or restoration. Upon inquiries to the detail of the engineer's report, uh, uh, the architect said that he would make it available to the community for their review. Again, it should be noted that it's evident that at least two of the rental apartments at this address were occupied shortly after the owner's purchase and remain so today. The community board stated its concern for precedent if one was to purchase a landmarked home and then pursue demolition and development without due cause. Reference was made to the many historic district property owners that, working with the commission, have made commitments to restoration and repair to include the associated financial investments. The community board committee stated that they too strongly objected to the proposed design. The architect, at that meeting, the architect stated that he and the owner understood the plans presented could better reflect the historic detail of other restored buildings in the district. He further stated that he would like to do more research and then in a few weeks, meet directly with the community for their input before returning to the, uh, community board with another proposal. The community board concur. In the weeks followed, multiple email requests were made to the developer and the architect by the community board chairperson and myself, asking for the promised engineer's report and the status of the promised new proposal. There was no response. The community questions the justification for demolition versus restoration based on the fact that the plans before you today appear to be the same as those rejected on March twentieth. What is new is an added structural observation report dated April sixth, actually prepared on, uh, March thirtieth, which was ten days after the community board meeting. Also, there is a mock-up view consisting of six photos, three of which simply show pictures of the trees in full bloom on Noble Street. In closing, the community believes that allowing this project to proceed as-is will lead to the destruction of the character of this and other historic districts. On behalf of the community, I thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Uh, the next speaker is Lawrence Drucker.
My name is Lawrence Drucker. I'm the owner and resident of one eleven Noble Street. I'm also, I'm sorry, one thirty-one Noble Street. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposal for the development of one eleven Noble Street. I'm a member with Mr. Koschan of the Steering Committee that is now forming a block association on Noble Street. We conducted an informal survey of seventy residents of the Noble and Lorimer Street neighborhood, and not a single resident came out in favor of this proposal. The neighbors strongly are opposed to it. A couple of points I'd like to make, uh, without repeating what's already been said. As you know, this district was established in nineteen eighty-two. The applicant has pointed to a number of houses, frame houses, on the end of the block closer to Franklin Street, um, that are really not characteristic of the remainder of the block. Um, as each of the houses on the block has been renovated, they've been renovated in character with the neighborhood. They've been, uh, have paid close attention to details such as shingles, window replacement, color choices, building materials. None of that is evident from the proposed development before you. In fact, there doesn't appear to be a single effort made to replicate anything that is remotely like the other homes on the block or within the historic district. I'd like to also bring your attention to other projects that have been, um, have been built in this area, even for new constructions, such as ninety-four Greenpoint Avenue, where a new structure was erected that blends in beautifully. It, it, it has brick, it has the same details that many of the surrounding homes have, and there's absolutely no reason that has been brought for, uh, this commission of why a similar project can't be undertaken here. In sum, it appears that not only has there been insufficient evidence justifying a complete teardown of this landmarked one hundred sixty-two-year-old frame house, um, but if the owner is allowed to tear it down, there's been absolutely no evidence brought before this commission as to why a new house built in the style of a nineteenth-century townhouse cannot be built in its place. To allow this project to go forward and erect a structure that is completely out of character with everything else on the block and within the historic district would set a dangerous precedent. It would be a first step to allowing developers to come in for profit to do a complete teardown and change the character of the neighborhood. I thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? You can know the speakers. Community Board one recommends unanimously to reject the proposal as the design was in no way contextual and suggested that the architect who wished to redesign the project work with the block association prior to bringing new design back to the community board. And this was issued on March twenty-seventh. All right, uh, do you want to respond to the testimony?
Uh, very quickly.
Okay.
One of the speakers pointed out that we failed to supply the structural report to the community board. What I would like to say in this regard is that we wrote emails to the community board pointing out that we have engineers updating the existing survey, and as soon as this is gonna be in our hands, we will send it in. What happened after that was basically, and it's absolutely true, that we said we're gonna sit down with the block association. In the meantime, what happened, uh, we found out through landmarks that our application was already denied, uh, two weeks after we first met with the community board. was already denied two weeks after we first met with the community board before we actually received the updated report back from a structural engineer. That prompted us not to meet with the block association, which might have been a decision that was made in error or not. However, we from our end thought like it was very awkward as well to find out from LPC that our application was already denied, and we were not given the opportunity to basically resubmit or submit the updated structural report. When it comes to the design intent, the color choices we made are very much in context with others. The size we made — what we made this building is exactly the same as many other buildings on the block. It is true that the location having brick in where the more — when more wood buildings are located is different. However, even so, in the lower area, there’s a couple of buildings, like right across the street is one, there’s also red brick. So it’s not exactly correct that we basically really designed an alienating building within this district. And I think when it — if it could get built, quite frankly, it would blend very well. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the development team? Right, in that case, we can close the hearing. All right, I think there are like obviously two — there’s a threshold issue here first, which is their proposal to demolish a building that — in a district which I think some of us know has a mix of buildings. It’s, you know, Greenpoint, it’s not sort of a high-end type neighborhood. It was always sort of working class. It has frame houses, it has, you know, modest brick row houses as well. And it was — when it was designated in 1982, it didn’t define no-style, non-contributing. So that was always kind of left open to the commission to interpret. So I think that — I think that’s a threshold issue. The commission has to feel comfortable that demolition is appropriate and/or absolutely necessary, needed. Are there other approaches before we can get to the second issue, which is if the commission can support the demolition, then what is being proposed, whether that’s appropriate? So I just wanted to put that out there in Commissioner’s comments. Yes, Michael?
I don’t — from what’s been presented, I can’t really see a case for why this building must be demolished. The engineer did not indicate that the foundations were significantly problematic. He indicated some things that were, you know, the issues related to the front porch and the railing are not relevant because it’s not an original front porch anyway. The issues related to the — to the fact that the floor joists are unblocked, I mean, buy a two-by-ten at Home Depot for fifteen bucks and that problem solved. The west wall being bowed, reasonable. But I mean, the interesting thing about wood houses is that they’re lightly made, but they’re easily fixed. And so far, none of the things that the engineer said, and the engineer admitted this at the end of his testimony, were irreparable. And we’ve seen plenty of wood frame structures which have been in much, much worse condition than these that have been repaired. So I think that the — I think that the main case here for demolition would have to flow not because the buildings are in poor structural condition, but because they were modified architecturally, aesthetically. There too, I don’t really — I mean, I think the age of the building and its relative — the fact we have good records on it and the fact that its form and volume are intact, the fact that its framing is intact, for me, makes it hard to justify the demolition of the building, even though it’s had vinyl solidified and the trim has been removed. Again, I mean, these are things that are incredibly easy to replace. In fact, had this house been original, probably most of these items would have been replaced by now anyway with relatively newer ones.
I’ll echo the same comment and same thought process, I think. I think — but I also want to say, I think it’s hard for us sitting around this table to fully judge the issues of structural instability, even with expert testimony given to us. So we rely, I think, very heavily on staff at this point also to assist the commissioners in coming to these conclusions. Thank goodness we have such a good staff to do this. But my sentiments are with Commissioner Goldblum. I haven’t been convinced that this house can and should not be saved. I’m thinking back in my own neighborhood years ago to what became well-known in the Landmarks Commission. 135 Droualman Street in Brooklyn Heights was — was not cared for by its owner for a generation or more, fell into complete disrepair. There was a lot of push to bring a demolition by neglect against the owner. It never happened, or it was about to happen perhaps, and all of a sudden, the owner appeared and started putting a ladder up and started banging around and began to fix it up. Well, now it’s a beautifully restored house. So it can be done. And I don’t think this house is in any worse condition. So I just haven’t been convinced yet that we can pass that first threshold of the two. So I’m not even prepared to comment on the design.
Other comments?
I think that I would say that it — I would go the other direction. If the building — if the building site were empty, would the new design be appropriate? And I say yes, I would — I could find it appropriate, and I wouldn’t say that it would be required for us — for the owner to build this building, the previous building, historic building, in terms of its volume or details. But I agree, I have to say, with the other commissioners that there isn’t a case — a strong enough case for the demolition of the building. And that there is something else about this — about the building that’s so special, even though it’s been so severely and heavily modified, and that is the way that it’s set back. And of course, its scale and its general, you know, form that was — has to do with its period. But the setting back is something that is worth maintaining, retaining, and is a character, I think, that’s sort of primary and special here, and so it’s important to retain.
Okay, other commissioners? All right. I, you know, I agree with Commission on — actually, there are two separate issues even towards demolition, which is I think the information is clearly insufficient that there is a case made that this building has to go, right? So we’ve seen other buildings in the neighborhood that was — that were altered over time, and they were restored, and they’re of, let’s say, exactly similar, but in a similar typology, they’re frame houses. So why wouldn’t we sort of support an approach, and why haven’t they considered that approach? And if it cannot be done, they should be a really compelling reason. And perhaps the way that the engineering reports and the structural information has been presented to us, it just wasn’t — you know, they started off a lot with the brickwork, and the brickwork is not even historic. And I think it’s really — I think they have to ask sort of this fundamental question whether this frame building can be retained and be authentic. I think that, you know, there is a different argument to be made of, yes, you do something here and there and you shore it, but ultimately, its historic fabric has to be removed, and there’s very little left. And I think, at least for me, that would make me, you know, at least consider whether then is demolition an appropriate approach. But just going back to what Michael Goldblum said about this idea is that should it flow from something else, and not just the mere demolition, but the fact that this building is what now we may say no-style, non-contributing, which wasn’t written that time. If you see the descriptions, and it’s pretty complicated actually going through this designation report, in general, there’s a support for frame houses. If you go to each individual description, it’s nothing much is said about this. It’s, you know, it’s highly altered, other buildings, there’s more descriptions. So I think we have to — if they want to make that case to us, then there has to be a lot more analysis associated with it. And in the end, I think the commission could grapple with that question. It hasn’t been predetermined. It’s something we could grapple with, but at this stage, I don’t think nothing has been put forward. And it’s interesting that you talked about the issue of the setback and, you know, being sort of a unique character. In some ways, you know, it’s — I think I see it more in comparison to what was there before historically. Historically, it actually had some very interesting features, which, yes, you can bring back, they won’t be historic anymore. But some of the other frame buildings are simpler, and therefore, restoring them was also a simpler proposition. So here, there’s more intervention to restore it. So I just raise that as a question and something to think about. But for me, I think, you know, the design, I have my own thoughts about this, but it seems that we really — they should come back with — really come back and give us a full sort of explanation about this, both why — if they believe it’s non-contributing and its loss and its replacement is appropriate and would enhance the district, and then, of course, that it just cannot be salvaged to the extent that demolition is appropriate. Yeah?
I think you raised an interesting — a couple of interesting points I just wanted to respond to briefly. First of all, that the idea of the frame house, per se, in this district is a type that is not uncommon and for which it was designated, I would argue. And that variety of streetscape which the applicants analyzed correctly, I thought, this house is a contributor to that, even in its heavily modified form. And whether it’s the setback, or the height, or the materiality, even in its current form, I think that it lends to the diversity and it recalls the modest origins of the district in a very clear way even today. So I think, like you were saying, the case for its removal should not be the same as the case for the removal of a one-story garage in Greenwich Village, right? It’s — which has its own advocates and issues. But it’s clearly not a building that we would call today non-contributing, even if it has been heavily modified.
All right. And I think the other thing I would just say, and I’m, you know, we’re not going to take any action today, that they really — perhaps should sort of — given that the bar is set high, and I think they should start thinking about another approach to this. It could be an approach which is more about restoration of the facade, but, you know, at the rear, you could do other things to it, which would allow for some expansion and addition, and maybe that’s the approach they should take.
We saw one recently, didn’t we? We saw some building that had a rear yard extension on a wood frame house in Brooklyn.
Yes, we did.
Can’t remember where it was.
Right, I think — I feel like saying it was in Crown Heights, but it was —
Is this the issue?
So — so there’s some flexibility there, but I think that would, you know, while they explore this other aspect, if they really cannot convince us, then they should think of another approach. Okay, so we won’t take any action today.
Okay, commissioners, we have a few public meeting items. First of which is 109 through 111 East 15th Street, the former Century Association building and individual landmark in the borough of Manhattan. It’s a neo-Greg style clubhouse designed by Gambrell and Richardson and built in 1896. The application is to alter the facade and replace entrance infill. That’s DACA number 1913478. And the second item is DACA number 1911169, and this is for a same property for a modification of use in bulk. A neo-Greg style clubhouse designed by Gambrell and Richardson, built in 1896. The application is to request that the Landmarks Preservation Commission issue a favorable report to the City Planning Commission relating to an application for a special permit for bulk waivers pursuant to Section 74711 of the zoning resolution. These were both presented July 18th, 2017. No action was taken at that time.
Edith Bellinghausen, Preservation Staff. Subject property is the former Century Association building, individual landmark, located on the north side of East 15th Street, between Union Square East and Irving Place. This proposal was initially presented at the public hearing of July 18th, 2017, and included a request for the LPC to issue a report to the City Planning Commission relating to an application for a special permit for bulk waivers. These waivers are requested for a new building proposed at an adjacent lot to the north on 16th Street. In support of this request, a scope of restorative work was proposed for the landmark building at the primary facade. At that time, the commissioners had requested that the restorative work be expanded to include the remaining portions at the rear facade and mansard roof, and that proportions of the proposed entrance infill at the primary facade be restudied to more closely match the proportions of the historic entrance infill. And the applicants have revised proposal in response to these comments. They’re here again to walk you through the —
I make a motion to reopen the hearing.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, commissioners. Wesley O’Ryan and Fried Frank, United States Council to the applicant. We’re here again to discuss the application pursuant to zoning resolution, Section 74711, involving restoration of the former Century Association building at East 15th Street, as well as a proposed new building at East 16th Street, predominantly for mixed-use building, predominantly for residential uses. So as a reminder, the site is located in the block east of Union Square. The zoning lot is outlined in red on the north side of the block. Along 16th Street is the development site, shown in peach. On the south side of the block is the landmark site, shown in gray, as well as an adjacent site identified as Lot 12, which includes the Lee Strasberg Film Institute. Here you see a photo of the existing condition at the development site. It’s currently occupied by an 84-story, rather, 84-foot public garden garage constructed in the 1860s. As part of our project, this garage will be demolished and replaced with a 21-story limestone, brick, and metal-clad building containing up to 55 dwelling units, as well as ground floor for commercial and community facility uses. In order to do this, we are seeking certain bulk waivers, which are detailed on this drawing. And so now we have Cass Stettelberg of Higgins Quays Park, who’s going to discuss the proposed building in more detail, as well as the additional changes to the proposed scope of restoration work.
Hi, Cass Stettelberg of Higgins Quays Park and Partners. I’m just going to quickly show you an overview of the context. The proposed building is shown here on 16th Street. The landmark property, the Century Association, is here, just a smaller building on the north side of 15th Street and obviously Union Square. The buildings in gray are highlighted, those are landmark properties. You get a sense of the context around the park and the scale of the buildings. And one thing to point out in terms of the relationship between the landmark on 15th Street and the new development on 16th Street is really the distance between the two. So in terms of harmonious relationship, I think one of the things that supports that is actually the distance between the landmark facade on the north side of 15th Street and the development, which begins 103 feet — sorry, 133 feet away from the landmark property. So the lot on 16th Street is 103 feet deep, and then there’s a 30-foot setback. So there’s 133 feet between the landmark facade and the new development. And then just quickly to illustrate on 16th Street, this is an elevation, a rendered elevation of the front of the building. As Wesley said, there’s a limestone base, metal — sorry, brick facade, and then a metal-clad roof which takes its key roof, which takes its cues from some of the mansard treatments, as well as the mansard on the backside of the site at the landmark property, but as well as some of the treatments of the surrounding buildings, Guardian Life, the Con Ed Building, both landmark properties. So turning to the restoration work, this is the building, Century Association Building on 15th Street. You asked us to look at a few things at the previous hearing in July. One was the detailing at the entry, and then also to look at including some restoration work on the rear facade, which we have done. The building, three stories, the base is stone, a sandstone with a brick body and then a slate clad mansard. The sandstone has all been coated with paint. There are nonhistoric windows and nonhistoric infill at the center of the building. All the stone will be restored, the brick cleaned and pointed as necessary, and we'll talk briefly about that as we go through these slides. This historic photo from 1914 is served really as our guide for the treatment of the infill, the windows, looking at some of the detailing, this grill work here at the second floor window, first floor windows, which we're using to guide the new infill at the base. The cresting, you can see here on the upper right, the cornice and cresting, which has been gone for some time, that will all be restored based on detailing taken from these photographs. And repairs to this, to this scupper, not matching that detail exactly, but one that will actually provide some better water shedding than what exists today. Some existing photographs of the slate roof here, on the upper portions, the condition of the masonry, the missing leader from the downsout, all that will be repaired, as well as the gutter and flashing at the top of the building. At the base, historically, there were arched windows at the base. Because of the egress requirements, we need to maintain these square head taller doors to get, to provide accessibility and access to the functions on the interior, but the masonry will be restored and new coins will be added to complete the coining framing those openings. At the back of the building, as discussed in July, there was a desire to have some restoration work done in the back. This upper floor of the mansard is visible. All the slate tiles here have been coated with an asphaltic coating as well as paint, as well as the cladding on these dormers, so it's going to require actually removal and replacement, but there will be a restoration scope across the top of the building at the rear facade. This is the elevation, the annotated elevation that you saw in July, and I'll just go to the next, which really shows the change at the entry. So there were discussions about the proportions of the door and the transom. Some felt that the transom was too tall, there was too much glazing. So the proportions now have been altered, so now there's more of a sort of horizontal reading to this transom by making the doors taller, that allows us to, I think, improve the detailing of that transom. And just to highlight the restoration work on the front facade. So top-down, I talked about the cornice and the cresting, all that will be, will be created based on the historic documentation. The slate across, across the roof, the mansard roof will be repaired. New wood windows, double-hung, two-over-two wood windows will be installed. These areas highlighted in yellow here are all painted, it's painted sandstone, this paint will be removed, the sandstone will be repaired. And at the base, new wood doors with grill work that takes the detailing from the original remaining grill work at the first floor, those will be installed at the accessible entry and the staged door entry here. Signs on either side of the entry are being made significantly smaller than what's there today, by two-thirds they're being reduced. And the masonry work as well, the brick of the whole body will be cleaned and pointed as required.
Just a quick question. So now the transom is what it was historically, that's the size of the...
So we're much closer to the historical, just because of the steps that were here originally, all of this was shifted up. I think we're close to it. I'm not sure what the dimensional changes were. We're not quite at that. I think it's a little taller, but it's much closer now to this sort of horizontal reading than what was there. With this, removal of these steps, it makes all of that infill much taller. So we've stretched, we've stretched the height of the doors to accomplish a shorter transom.
Okay.
So at the rear, as I mentioned in the photographs, there's now a scope across the top, new double-hung, two-over-two wood windows at these three dormers, recreating the cladding, the metal cladding around the dormer windows themselves, and then restoring, really, in this instance, replacing the slate roof with a new slate roof, given the coatings that are on that, on the slate tops, it just won't be possible to get those off. Some detailing of the cresting that you can see in the historic photographs, that will be recreated across the top, as well as the cornice, which is missing. You can see here, there's just some flashing that's been put in its place, so the cornice and cresting will be restored. This is a, an illustration of the doors. So this is the existing entry, what was presented in July, and then the new, the new proposal. So we're going from a six-and-a-half foot tall transom to a five-foot tall transom. So it does allow us to get to that sort of more horizontal proportion. At the base, these doors will be replaced, they're just metal doors with a simple grilling. These grills up at, at the first floor will be used as a, as a design motif for grills in front of these new wood doors, which will allow for some repair and sort of more appropriate infill at the base and the creation of coining up to this, to this developed course. And then again, sort of a combination of spread of the existing elevation, what you saw previously, and the new proposal, and then finally we'll just conclude with the existing elevation at the rear, and the proposed restored elevation at the top, and then a rendered elevation at the...
Thank you. Are there any questions? Yes, Michael?
If you could just go over, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you to repeat it, but the, the argument, the way that this addresses the 74-711 requirement for a harmonious relationship with the landmark, how does this particular volume that's being proposed, the length, or create that harmonious relationship with the site?
So I think there are two, there are two, one, there's the, there's the issue of the site, and I, why don't I go back to, go back to the first slide, the site. As was discussed in July, this is always reluctant to use the word unique, because I'm probably not right, so I'll say it's an unusual circumstance, where the new development is actually not adjacent to the landmark site, but it's actually on a block to the north. So I think the first, the first issue is site, and that is the fact that the development is actually, as I said, 133 feet away from the landmark facade on 16th Street. So there's a relationship in there, and it isn't necessarily one of harmony, but it's a distance, and I think that actually supports, supports this. The other is just looking at the materiality and organization of the facade and its new design. So the idea of having, I'll go back to this, this stone base, brick body, and mansard treatment, again, you don't see the historic building and the new building in their entires adjacent to one another, you really just see the top of the historic building, sorry, you see the top of the new building behind the historic building. So taking cues from the organization of the facade, materiality, the transition of materials, and then the organization of the roof state, this sort of mansard treatment, you see these as having a sort of design relationship with one another. And as well, on a sort of more macro level, there's been a, an effort on the team, because the buildings, the new developments, distance away from the landmarks, sort of looking at the broader context, and looking how the new building sort of fits within that sort of Union Square context, and the other landmark, the district, obviously, sort of lower case than E District, looking at the way this new building sort of fits within that, obviously that's not tied to the 74-711, but is a consideration of the design.
Thank you. Are there any more questions?
Maybe I missed it, but I, Cass, what's the, is there any space, again, maybe I missed it, behind the building that was once green, or anything else behind the Century Building?
Um, I don't, sorry. I don't believe so. I don't, I haven't been in the back of the backyard. The building has been built full, isn't it?
Is it built full?
Yeah.
The historic, the Century?
Yeah.
Was built full. And we don't have any historic images of its back.
Are there any other questions? Only no other questions, we can close the hearing then. So, you know, last time, we, we talked about sort of the preservation purpose as one of the findings, and so in response, I think they've given us a much more full restoration plan. And, you know, I went by the building, yeah, yesterday, and it's actually kind of a dark street because of the second door of building on one side, and, but when, oddly intimate when you're walking on that sidewalk, and actually the paint is pretty unfortunate. And so I actually think that, you know, it's an interesting question about how much restoration can you do, and I think the commission's always taken the position that we're not going to penalize someone who's kept their building in good state. But I think that these changes that they're proposing is actually going to do, is going to be very positive for the landmark. So in my opinion, I think that, that finding that has to be made about preservation purpose, along with the fact that it's going to have a continuing maintenance plan, are met. And I think the other issue, which is about harmonious relationship, again, it's sort of interesting, because more often than not, we tend to see the, the new building adjacent to a very close sort of relationship to, to the landmark. And I think this is sort of a case which is somewhat different, in fact, is sort of separated from that. It becomes a backdrop building, and, you know, again, I think we see landmarks juxtaposed with taller buildings around it. And so I think, you know, they've talked about the material, but I think just the fact that its building is significantly separate will form that harmonious relationship. So I think I could, you know, I support those findings that are made under the 74-711, that's before us. Other comments? Yes, Fred?
I completely agree. I think we didn't have much problem with the issue before, a few issues with the front of the building and the back, and applicant has addressed it very well, I think. My only problem is that sign. I think it really detracts from the elegance of this building. And I just wonder why it has to be so big, so colorful, it just seems completely inappropriate on this fabulous building. So I question that, but otherwise, I can support it as presented.
Others?
Yeah, I agree on the sign issue. They do get the opportunity to use their, their style of logo on the awning. I'm not sure it's necessary to be repeated three times on the, within 15 feet.
Right. And if that, if they really need to have signs, then maybe those signs should be more like plaques that are more consistent with club buildings and other institution buildings. So, yes.
I, I agree that the findings related to the preservation have been that. I'm not, I'm still not sold on the, on the harmonious relationship, though. I mean, the, what's being asked for here is, is a doubling of height, from 120 feet to 280 feet, so more than a doubling of height. And I can't figure out how that modification improves, or in, or acts in a harmonious relationship with this particular landmark. I understand the argument about distance and it's on a separate block, but there's no question that the building will be visible from the street where you see the building. I think it will be considerably more visible than it would have been had the variance, had the modification not been sought. I think that we all the time ask that new visible additions be restrained in their visibility relative to the landmark. If this were air conditioning on the roof, or if this were a rooftop addition, it would not be approvable. And even though it's 100 feet back from, 130 feet back from the, the front, it's 30 feet back from the back, and I, I just, you know, I don't think the building's a bad building, per se, and I, I kind of understand the urban planning argument that's being made by the aerial views, but I think that we cannot disregard the fact that it's not even close to meeting the zoning. It's not even close to meeting what was the historic environment for the building in its developmental phases at any time. The buildings that immediately are adjacent to it, that are historic, even though they're not in a district, are half the height. So I, I just don't see the argument here. It's not that I think the building's a bad building, but I don't see that the waiver requirement is met, as I understand it, as I read it.
Well, just a couple of things, and, you know, I think it may have come about waivers before, but I think the standard is not necessarily, is this more harmonious than if it was as a right? I think it's merely whether it's harmonious. So I think the comparative analysis, the commission may and may ask for it, but it's not the finding. So I think that's one thing. So the idea, for me, because I talked about it, is that you have buildings, this, the relationship of this building, of the new building to the old, is one of a backdrop building and distance from it. And so from that perspective, I, I see that it's harmonious because it's no different from, so the patterns of, of historic buildings within an urban setting of, even within Union Square, for that matter. So we have other landmark buildings in the area which have backdrops of larger buildings. So that setting is very, is not, it's not unique, it's, it's comfortable, and it's very much a part of the urban scape, I think, that we see in Manhattan and even around Union Square specifically. So I think one can make that finding. The idea about, you know, how much waiver is really before city planning. The reality is that the, the height increase, if one wants to be really technical, part of that is coming from this building, part of it's coming from the Lee Strasberg Building. That, that evaluation will be done by city planning and is not really for us to kind of comment on. If it's within a historic district, then we would be commenting on how it relates to, to the district itself, but that's not the case. So I just wanted to say that. Are there any other comments or concerns?
I will only just say, add to, to what Michael said. I do think we can, we have to admit that the harmonious relationship here is, has to do, is transactional. I mean, it's, it behooves both entities to be in a relationship in order for the, in order for the restoration to happen to the historic building, in order for the maximization of the, of the height on the new building. So I don't think we should fake it, that, that harmony here is figural or environmental. I mean, it's just, so let's just say that. Because I, because otherwise, you know, I, I also wouldn't find it present here, that, that in, in the space of the, you know, the urbanistic fabric here, that there's a, that there's a harmony achieved otherwise. I mean, there might be a convention here that in this, you know, in this area, there are, you know, tall heights, tall buildings, and that serves as backdrop for the lower buildings, but otherwise, what's really the harmony?
I think, Commissioner, I think that, just to follow up on what the chair said, the commission has looked at this issue when there's distance and, and, you know, fair distance between the landmark building and something else, and specifically found that it's just too tenuous a relationship, that that finding isn't, isn't, you know, it's either a neutral finding, that it doesn't detract in any way, or it's sort of almost inapplicable that it's, that it's so far back. And I think that that's, that's at play here. This is a building that is, you know, really a backdrop building, and one could easily find that it doesn't call attention, it doesn't really have any effect one way or the other, and sort of the finding isn't really that applicable.
Are there any other comments? All right. Yes, you are.
The issue of 109-111 East 15th Street, the former Century Association Building and individual I note that the, the application is being heard in conjunction with LPC 19-11169, an application to request that the Landmark's Preservation Commission issue a favorable report to the City Planning Commission relating to an application for a special permit for bulk waivers pursuant to section 74-711 of the zoning resolution, and LPC 19-14424, an application for facade restoration that is being reviewed at the staff level. Staff, I further note that the entrance and facade were altered prior to designation. I recommend approval, noting that the proposed work will not eliminate any significant historic fabric. fabric, that the proposed main entrance infill, featuring paneled wood and glass doors, spandrel and transom, with a dark mahogany finish, will closely match the materials, details, design, and proportions of the historic entrance infill prior to the removal of the stoop, that the proposed infill at the side entrances, featuring wood and glass panel doors with integrated wrought iron grills and a dark mahogany finish, will relate to historic materials found elsewhere on the building, that modifying the stone coin surrounds at the side entrances will formalize these previously altered openings, resulting in a more cohesive appearance, and that the proposed work will enhance the special architectural and historic character of the individual landmark. And that the design and proportions of the two box signs detract from the facade of this individual landmark and will be reworked with staff along the lines of a plaque appropriate to other clubs in the city.
All in favor? Any opposed? This application is approved.
Next, again, in the matter of 109-111 East 15th Street, the former Century Association Building, an individual landmark. This application is to request that the Landmarks Preservation Commission use a favorable report to the City Planning Commission relating to an application for a special permit for bulk waivers pursuant to Section 74-711 of the zoning resolution. I recommend approval of the special permit, noting that the restorative work of the approved, to be approved at staff level, including masonry repair and cleaning, wood window and door replacement, slate roof repair, and metal cornice cresting and cresting restoration and repair, will restore missing architectural details and return the building closer to its historic appearance, that the implementation of a cyclical maintenance plan will ensure that the continued maintenance of the building in a sound first-class condition, and that the owners of the designated building have committed themselves to establishing a cyclical maintenance plan that will be legally enforceable by the Landmarks Preservation Commission under the provision of a restrictive declaration, which will bind all heirs, successors, and assigns, and which will be recorded at the New York County Registrar's Office. Furthermore, that the Landmarks Building occupies the full lot, and that the proposed new building will maintain a 30-foot rear yard, and therefore, the rear yard waiver will have no effect on the landmark in terms of being read as an individual building, that the proposed new building, featuring a contemporary design that utilizes traditional materials and finistration with stepped setbacks at the upper floors that read as a simple pyramidal volume, will contrast with and be clearly independent of the landmark, that the presence of a taller building seen in the background above small-scale buildings, including individual landmark buildings such as this one, is a common occurrence within the surrounding blocks and throughout the city, that the landmark building is located on a narrow street situated next to a taller building to the west, and a taller building to the northeast that can be seen in the background above it, with other tall buildings across the street. Therefore, the addition of the new building is consistent with the variety of scale in the immediate visual context of this individual landmark, and that therefore, the massing materials and design of the proposed tower will have a harmonious relationship with the former Century Association Building.
All in favor? Any opposed? One opposed. This application is approved. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, we'll move to the third item on the public meeting agenda. It's an application for certificate of appropriateness Borough Manhattan, DACA number 1916542. This is 334 West 20th Street, located within Chelsea Historic District. It's a Greek Revival-style row house built in 1836. The application is to amend certificate of appropriateness 19-05410 to construct a rooftop bulkhead.
Emma Waterloo, Preservation Staff. The item before you is for 334 West 20th Street in the Chelsea Historic District. The building is located on the south side of the street between 8th and 9th Avenues. The Commission first saw this proposal on August 2nd, 2016, for rooftop and full-height rear yard additions. At that public hearing, the Commission expressed concern that the additions overwhelmed the building. The Commission last saw this proposal at the public meeting on September 13th, 2016, where the applicants had eliminated the rooftop addition and proposed a full-height rear yard addition. The Commission required that the rear yard addition be lowered by one floor. A certificate of appropriateness was then issued on May 2nd, 2017. Subsequently, in filing with the Department of Buildings, the applicants found that a roof access hatch was determined not to meet code requirements. Therefore, this application is to amend that previous approval to include a rooftop bulkhead, shown here. The bulkhead will be visible from public thoroughfares and views from the west over the neighboring church complex. The applicants are here to answer any additional questions.
Okay. Are there any just shows of the views of how it's?
Sure. So, here's, this is the current rear yard. This is the approved rear facade. And then, here is the proposed bulkhead. So, this was the roof access hatch. And here is the bulkhead.
What happened with the hatch?
The planning examiner, he said that it did not meet code, and we would need to be in the public hearing to get more details from the applicant.
Go figure.
Yeah. If we have any questions, we'll ask you. But so, they went to DOD, we were happy because we thought, okay, there's another solution here, but apparently, it's been rejected. And so, they've had to go back to a bulkhead. But if you look at the profile, I think they've tried to make sure that it was as minimal as possible.
So, this is the bulkhead over that side facade. And then, views include, unfortunately, at the moment, we have trees that are here and here, and the applicants have rendered that into one of the wintertime views where you see it over top of the stepped parapet.
Okay. Are there any questions or concerns? So, it's not visible from the front facade, but it's only the side, and that's where you have the church that is at our house. Okay. We have bulkheads, you see them in profile and on this side.
In the matter of 19-16542, 334 West 20th Street, Chelsea Historic District, a Greek Revival style row house built in 1836. The application is to amend the certificate of appropriateness 19-05410 to construct a rooftop bulkhead. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Chelsea Historic District extension. I also note that alternatives to a bulkhead were explored. However, the bulkhead is required by the Department of Building Code. I recommend approval, finding that the work will not damage, destroy, or obscure any significant architectural features, that the proposed bulkhead will only be visible from a public thoroughfare over a secondary facade, and that the simple detailing and neutral gray stucco finish of the bulkhead will help it to recede from view and will be consistent in character with the stucco sidewall over which it will be seen and the variety of accretions added to roofs of buildings of this type and style over time.
All in favor? Any opposed? This application's approved.
Okay. Commissioners, the final item on the agenda is an application for certificate of appropriateness Borough Manhattan, DACA number 1910665. This is 50 Hudson Street, located within the Tribeca West Historic District. It's an early 20th century commercial-style factory building designed by William F. Hemm Street and built in 1925. The application is to construct rooftop additions, enlarge window openings, and install a garage door in curb cut, which was last presented July 18, 2017, and no action was taken at that time.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Karina Bishop, Preservation Staff. Project before you is 50 Hudson Street, located at the corner of Hudson and Thomas Streets in the Tribeca West Historic District. Application was first presented at a public hearing on July 18, 2017, where no action was taken. The proposal is to construct a two-story rooftop addition, setback penthouse and bulkhead, which will feature glass brick curtain walls and parapets. The proposal also includes enlarging the window openings at the third floor of the historic building, and installation of garage and curb cut on the Thomas Street facade. The comments from the Commissioners at the public hearing concern the relationship between the design of the addition and the historic building in terms of proportion, street wall setbacks, and design details. The applicants have returned with a revised proposal, which addresses the Commissioners' comments in the following ways. The floor-to-ceiling heights were reduced by a total of six inches. The setbacks were reduced so that the addition rises just behind the parapet. The proportions of the window openings were modified. The glass railings and greenery were eliminated from the roof, and a cast glass corner detail and extended glass parapet were added to the design. Jackie Puduvallan is here to present.
Make a motion to reopen the proceeding.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for hearing our application today. Jackie Puduvallan, Preservation Consultant. And just go back to there. As Karina noted, the application was last seen by you on July 18. At that time, there was consensus that the proposed addition was appropriate to the building and the historic district. However, Commissioners requested that the proportions of the addition and its relationship to the existing building be refined. Commissioners also requested that the hedge and glass railing be removed from the proposal, which they have been. In response to your comments, the following changes have been made. Regarding proportion, as Karina noted, we worked closely with the staff to re-study the floor-to-ceiling heights, and subsequently, the height of the addition has come down by six inches. And the proposed window openings were enlarged to create a lighter and more distinctive addition. The setback has been reduced to 12 inches, which is just behind the parapet. This enhances the relationship of the addition to the existing building and better unifies the two, while at the same time, it continues to maintain the separation between the original building and the new. And it enables the addition to more effectively fill in the corner and complete the street wall, which Commissioners said was important at this location. And regarding the parapet, which, as Karina noted, is a new design element, the new glass brick parapet improves the relationship between the two structures and the relationship of the building to the corner. It repeats a design element on the existing building, here, and maintains the presence of a crowning element on the building. And we think it is appropriate to the district, in this particular district, which is characterized by solid and pierced parapets. The presence of the parapet atop the addition more effectively fills in the void at the corner and creates a more historic block front that conforms to the typical district streetscape. And the opening in the parapet at the corner, which you see here, makes it clear that it is a parapet and not, excuse me, and not additional occupiable space. Regarding the new corner treatment, the new clear glass corner detail improves the relationship between the two structures by referencing another design element on the existing building, which is this incised corner below where the brick is stepped back to create the look of pilasters. This detail carries up to the parapet where the glass corner steps back behind the opening in the parapet and softens the addition. Finally, new sideline drawings included in your packet show that the penthouse addition will not be visible from the street. And with that, it is now my pleasure to introduce again the architect, Monsieur Thierry Despont, to describe the design. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. I'd like to thank you and the staff, because I do believe with your comments and push, we know have a really, really good design. We, it has been clarified, we worked on the proportion. I'm convinced that first from the urban design point of view, this is the right proportion on the wall. As I mentioned in a previous appearance, I lived on Duane Park for a long time. I loved the area. And I think this really will indeed fill this void that I felt was always uncomfortable for the urban design philosophy. Eliminating or reducing the setback by moving the new addition right against the parapet is also an improvement. We took out the green reater. But as you can see on the photograph, it also reduced even more the visibility of the side wall, this dark brown party wall adjacent to the building. The modification of the proportion of the windows, I think, goes also a long way to make the new addition lighter and better proportion. I would skip, we did detailed studies on golden proportion, and I think two-story over three and the exact relationship of the top versus the bottom is good. We're fortunate to have an owner, a client, who was willing to go along with any suggestion. When I proposed to cast a glass corner, he went along, this is not a cheap solution, but I think it would be spectacular. We would have a kind of a solid glass prism at the corner, which I hope at times may reflect the light. And at the same time, the new parapet has a four-inch void, leaving it open just on top of this corner, which I think would also be an elegant way to mark this corner. So, I'm open to any question, but I hope you do appreciate the effort.
Okay. Are there any questions? Any questions? All right. Thank you. If no other questions, we can, we can close the hearing. All right. So, yeah, go ahead. Go on, Fred.
Well, I liked it before. I like it even more now, and think that the architect's opening comment, which we reasonably frequently hear around this table, makes us feel good, and I think since the staff was also involved, makes us happy that the staff was also encouraging good design solutions here. The proportions have changed, the bringing out, you know, the setback, ironically, we usually like setbacks, but I think in this case, the setback was not working as well. And I think bringing it forward, all of this works well. The building seems lighter and I think more interesting. Congratulations on convincing your client to build that beautiful corner detail. It's going to be the signature of the building now. I think it's really, it's really quite a handsome ensemble. I can completely support it.
Okay. Other comments? All right. You know, I remember at the last hearing, I think I may have been one of the people who said, well, the setback works, and why not even think of sort of accentuating it more? But looking at this design and recognizing that probably there were different goals trying to be achieved here, and one of the goals was to really speak to the street wall. And I think that was a very compelling part of the presentation last time around about this building, its addition, and not only that it's appropriate within the context of the existing building, but also within the context of the historic district and its particular location around Duane Park, and really anchoring the its particular location around Duane Park, and really anchoring the corner. So I think that actually without the setback is really a better solution, and with the change in the fenestration at the facade, so it's not now as, I think before it was kind of a replication of these punched openings, and I think now it's much more subtle, so it distinguishes itself, but it also feels like it's, you know, it's more harmonious. I think it actually works well with the building, the historic building as well, and I think the detail at the corner is actually a very nice touch to it, so I could support this as well. All right, any other questions? Okay, John? Yes, go ahead.
In the matter of Docket Number LPC 19-10665, 50 Hudson Street, in the Tribeca West Historic District, the application is to construct rooftop additions, enlarge window openings, and install a garage door in curb cut. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Tribeca West Historic District. Furthermore, I note that the building was constructed as a purpose-built office and warehouse for a paper company and is incorrectly listed in the designation report as a factory building. Further note that the Tribeca West Historic District is characterized by late 19th and early 20th century commercial buildings of the store, loft, and warehouse types, with typical building heights ranging from four to seven stories, with the exception of several Art Deco-style skyscrapers. Height of this structure is less common, as only approximately 10% of the buildings in this historic district are three stories or fewer. I finally note that the adjacent streetscape along Hudson Street and bordering Duane Park features street walls without setbacks. I recommend approval, noting that the construction of the proposed rooftop addition, mechanical bulkhead, and penthouse will not eliminate or cause damage to any significant architectural features of the roof or building, that because of the building's unique typology and corner locations seen within the context of a variety of larger buildings, the presence of a visible rooftop addition will not detract from the streetscape, that the proposed addition will be set back slightly from the parapets, thereby distinguishing the massing of the addition from that of the historic building, that the overall height and scale of the two-story addition, penthouse, and bulkhead successfully relates to the proportions of the historic building and the streetscape, that the design of the addition is inspired by elements of the historic facade, with the contemporary material that references historic brick, masonry units, and punched window openings, and in its contrasting materiality, allows the historic building to remain legible, that the proposed detailing of the glass brick featuring silicone joints and an internally concealed support structure is a modern interpretation of the continuous historic brick construction at the factory building below, that the cast glass corner detail and glass brick parapet will recall in a contemporary manner the inset brick corner detail and parapet of the historic building, that the mechanical bulkhead and glass-clad penthouse will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, and will be in keeping with the industrial character of the building and other rooftop accretions found in the district, that installation of a garage door on the Thomas Street facade will not result in the removal of significant historic fabric, and will be compatible with the commercial character of the bases of buildings throughout the district, that the proposed curb cut will be typical in terms of size and placement, and will be a discreet presence within the streetscape, that lowering the window sills at the top floor will match the previously approved window heights on the second floor, and will not involve the removal of significant architectural features, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the Tribeca West Historic District.
All in, all in favor? Any opposed? This application's approved.